Time is now six thirty-four. I'm Chairman Mike Curry. And I'd like to call this Board of Selectmen Business Meeting to order on this thirteenth day of November two thousand nineteen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to state for the record, the entire proceeding this evening, except any executive sessions, are being recorded for both TCTV Cable Station Eight and TCTV YouTube Channel. Therefore, there is no additional, uh, need for additional recording. And anyone else that is recording, just let us know before we start with the business portion of the meeting. As always, our agenda for this evening has been set no later than forty-eight hours by law and is publicly available at the official source for town information, TempletonMA.gov. I would also remind all citizens of our four villages to sign up or register for emergency updates using the Code Red system, which is on the left-hand side at the lower portion of the screen. And although I have the discretion as chairperson to add and remove from the agenda, it has been set to allow for time, personnel resources, and public awareness. I reserve the right to move agenda items around to best fit our guests and our business at hand. Thank you. This evening, you'll notice, sitting next to me, we have Selectwoman Griffiths participating remotely by video and voice.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, are you there?
Okay, before we move into the new business portion of this evening, is there any public comment this evening? Yep, Ms. Farrell? So for this evening, as we have a little bit of a, uh, a larger audience than we normally have, if you've got a statement, try and keep your statement to a maximum of three or five minutes. If you have questions, you can get to your questions pretty directly, and if we can, we'll answer them for you. This really isn't directed towards you, it's just if we have a lot of people.
That's fine. What I, I'm here tonight is about the codification that took place at the annual town meeting in May, and the repeal of the bylaw for the use of sanitary landfill. I have a copy of that.
Yep.
Right here.
Can we have a, do you have a copy for Julie?
I think I do.
Okay.
But actually, it's not mine.
Thank you.
Do you want it entered in? I mean, if it's, if it's part of the historical...
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you enter it in, then...
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Well, I can, I can give this copy. To enter into the records.
Julie, is it Article twenty-three?
Yes. Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I'm right with you.
Okay. A number of people attended the Board of Health meeting on November fourth. And we were told at that meeting that this bylaw was still in effect. And I, we have subsequently found out from the town clerk that it was repealed with the codification. I remember going through the codification, I did not attend the meetings, that this bylaw was included in Section two twenty-five, solid waste management, and it was in one of the drafts. I would like to know how it was removed.
Okay, um, I can definitely answer that. I think, um, Jeff, do you want to handle any of that?
Yeah, I don't mind.
Okay.
All right. This is a booklet that we had, these bylaws prior to the codification. I think there's a requirement, we're supposed to every five years print this out. This is two thousand and ten. And the bylaw is Article twenty-three, use of sanitary landfills. And this subject came up at the Board of Health, and there's been a lot of interest in it, and it was removed. And I believe, I don't believe, I know in the codification, it has chapter, and this is the, Redline Draft, clean copy, four twenty-three, April. Anyway, the notation says, commented, Chapter two twenty-five, the solid waste bylaw, deleted in its entirety as unnecessary. Templeton no longer has a town dump, which is true. The landfill on Route two oh two has been closed. The bylaw, however, and it is very specific about the landfill and what, and who can bring stuff there. But it's the last sentence that makes even me question why it was removed. And the last sentence is excluded shall be the transportation of garbage and refuse from out-of-town areas to the Templeton landfill and/or any other properties in the town of Templeton. And that was amended in, lastly, February nineteenth, two thousand and four. And the other curious thing that I found is the original done, uh, it's a portfolio, it's the, when General Code got a hold of all our bylaws and looked at all of them, and it's, it's indexed in here in the back, all of the mass general laws that the town ever accepted, starting in eighteen ninety-six, goes back a ways. General Code's opinion or stated of Chapter two twenty-five, solid waste, use of sanitary landfill, originally put in place five-ten nineteen seventy-five, Article twenty-three of the bylaws. This article restricts the use of the town landfill to solid waste from town residents and businesses, and appears to be sufficient as written. So when Code, when General Code looked at it, they didn't see any problem with it. How or who made this decision that stated in the right hand of the Redline Draft? I'm not aware of. I was not on the Board of Selectmen at that time. And lastly, I, I would state, and maybe this doesn't make a lot of people happy or nothing, but this happened by a vote of town meeting. And we all have to take, at least, all of us residents have to take at least half the responsibility for this happening because it was there in writing, in one place or another. And it came to town meeting, and the motion was made to skip reading the whole, I don't know, three hundred something pages. I don't think people wanted, well, we're in the mood to do that. And it was, okay, we'll skip it. So we have to take responsibility as residents for that. I will assume that a lot of people and a lot of the interest is in where the side note came from and who decided that.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of it, looking back at the meeting minutes of it, going before the Board of Selectmen. So I, I, I cannot speak to how that was. I just speak to what I have as a record in front of me. And I, I started at the beginning, when this process started, I requested this copy. And I looked through it, and when I saw General Code's opinion, I said, okay. There's a lot of bylaws that they said that on, and some of them did end up getting changed. I did not go look through every single bylaw. The ones that said change had remarks on them, I went and looked at them. I also included in here is the new order, labeling, if you will, of the articles and so forth. So that's what I have found since the Board of Health meeting, and people started saying, what happened to our bylaw and who did what? That's the paper trail that I have, and I guess you all are interested in this. I cannot answer that. That's what I've given you, what I've stated, that's what I know. I have paper to prove it. And I have the articles that we voted on, both the voter's guide and the posted warrant for Article fifteen, and the motion on a motion duly made and seconded, the town voted to amend the bylaws of the town of Templeton in order to improve consistency of language and style throughout, bylaws in conformance with current practice and with general laws of the Commonwealth by adopting changes of the general bylaws in the document entitled Redline Draft Codification V-one-nineteen. It has two nineteen, twenty nineteen, with a line drawn through it, four twenty-three nineteen, clean copy, available on the town's website for inspection. In deleting any and all text shown, will they strike through and by adding any and all text that is underlined and by amending any other bylaw adopted or amended at this town meeting by renumbering said bylaw to be consistent with the numbering sequence adopted in Redline Draft four twenty-three two thousand and nineteen, clean copy, that if any amendment identified above is not adopted by this town meeting, or if it is adopted by this town meeting but is not approved by the Attorney General, then the corresponding section in the current bylaw shall not be deleted and shall be inserted in the amended bylaws and numbering sequence, shall be amended to conform to the new bylaws passed by two-thirds vote May sixteenth, seven thirty-six p.m. That is on the record on the town's website. And apparently, people did not want to listen to, like, say me, for instance, read three hundred and something pages. That's, that's the information that I have in front of me, and that's the paper trail I can give you.
All right.
So I, you know, that's a lot of research that Jeff went into it, and I think that, you know, I, ultimately, I read it as a singular item, so that... Right, so, you know, just really speaking to Julie's question, but I, I acknowledge in the back, Beverly, that last sentence is really the meat and potatoes of what concern is right now. But that wasn't the bylaw's singular purpose for being there.
Yeah, it was originally.
So, right, but the fact it won't have a singular landfill at that point, the purpose for why it was struck from it makes sense to me. And that's where it basically, for lack of a better term, disappeared. People said, well, it disappeared. It disappeared because there was no longer a use for it. However, that last sentence kind of become, became the victim of that line item action. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. My concern is, how do we reinstate this bylaw?
I think, like, we would add any bylaw back into the books.
Is, is that how you do it? Because I have documentation, I want to call for a special town meeting, I'd have to gather two hundred signatures to call for it, and I want to make sure that the wording of it...
You're a hundred percent right. I, you, you asked the question, I would say there's definitely a process for that.
Okay.
I, I could, you can kind of see it coming, you know, as we went through all of the different facts that led up to this point. I certainly appreciate Jeff going through, and I know he would, he's very, very on top of the codification process that took a lot, and it was a lot of red ink, a lot of black and white ink, a lot of copies going back and forth. So I, you know, I thank Jeff for going through that process, but I don't think that's the end of it.
Okay, so what is the process to add this bylaw back into the codification?
I mean, you just started going into some of them. You're gonna have, what, ten people for an annual town meeting? Have to get together to put something in for an article?
No, we have to get, we have to have the form made out. We got the forms from the town clerk today. We have to have...
For a special town meeting?
For a special town meeting.
And you just talked about the numbers required for that.
Right, two hundred.
It's two hundred.
Right, so that's, that's just process. What is the process to add this bylaw into the codification? What is the correct...
Well, codification's already occurred.
No, I would think, if I may, Mr. Jeff?
Yep, please.
You, you want this bylaw to, to be, go back into effect?
Yes.
Since it does not exist in our bylaws, you would just be proposing a new bylaw?
New bylaw.
And take this book with that previous wording that's already passed muster with the Attorney General?
With the Attorney General, meantime.
Yeah, codification doesn't mean it gets in, in, difficult.
And that would be the article, and the wording has already been approved by the Attorney General. And in the meantime, if anybody legally wants to check on it or maybe take a lot of the specificity out of, you know, emphasis on the landfill,
Right.
you could always amend the motion on town meeting floor. That would be my approach. You already have the wording, there's no sense reinventing the wheel. It's already passed muster several times.
Right.
The last time, as of two thousand and four, so, and it's, it's no longer in, it's no longer a bylaw. We don't, you don't, I, I understand you're thinking about redoing a town meeting, but, but the bylaw is gone, it's not in there. So we propose a new bylaw that says this.
All right.
For this, you know, and make the argument about, hey, we want to keep this kind of stuff out of our town and see what happens.
Would that include, if we resubmitted and restated it to include types one, two, and three, paper sludge and/or biomix based upon the preference of the citizens of our town?
Terry, if, if it was a citizens' initiative, it could say whatever it wanted to.
Yes.
Mike, why?
Yeah, please.
I'd like to know what the citizens would think to, to make sure we include the words paper sludge or biomix.
Yeah, but we're not...
Not just garbage, even though, because the, the wording that disturbs me the most is that the biomix material is neither garbage nor refuse.
Yeah, but that's not her question. Terry, I, I gotta stop you so we don't bleed into another subject. It's, we're talking about bylaw, we're not addressing another issue. But I understand what you're saying. If it's a citizen's petition and you want to be a part of that, then you can, you can do that. But we're not rewriting the bylaw as it stands right now in this meeting. It's, we're in public comment right now, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of answering Julie's questions. Diane, did you have something?
Yeah, so you're just, you're, you're just wanting to know how to put a bylaw back in, but it might not necessarily be this exact bylaw, because we no longer have a landfill.
Right.
So you're just looking to write a new bylaw?
Well, we would probably keep the wording because...
But we don't have a landfill anymore.
Right.
So it would be confusing.
Well, the reason why we would keep the wording is because it's been approved by the Attorney General four times, even though we've added sections after that. Okay, the original was in seventy-five, approved by the Attorney General. That's the one that states it's off a two oh two sanitary landfill. Then it was amended again in eighty-two, it was amended again in oh two, and then it was amended again in oh four. Okay?
Julie, can I interrupt?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into those specifics.
You know, not, it's not, it's not an agenda item, so I'd really like to keep it to your public comments, whether it's questions or otherwise, in the interest of time. But I think we're doing a pretty good job so far. Jeff, you had a rebuttal?
Yes, I, I just wanted to kind of remind the board and everybody here, this is a Board of Selectmen's meeting and a citizens' petition. If you want to talk about where, I'd be glad to help you out, do anything you want to help anybody out if they want to do a citizens' petition. But that is not technically the business of this board.
Right.
And this has been argued before, the citizens' petitions go to town council, and, you know, you, you know about that.
I do.
So as far as the wording, outside of a selectmen's meeting, I'm glad to help anybody, stay anywhere you want to go. But it's, coming up with the wording of a citizens' petition is really not the business of this committee, so... I just don't want to get too lost and too off.
No, it's okay. They're all good fair questions. What else, Julie?
That was it. I just really wanted to know
Okay.
how to word it so that we could put it correctly on the call for a special town meeting.
Right, I, you know, and to close out that, you know, what do you want? It, it, because you're not asking for the board to try and guide that process, you know, it's, it truly is a citizens' petition to say, how do we want to govern our town? And it can be done for anything, so I understand your question, but it really goes back to, how do we make us us? And I think everybody kind of understands that aspect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Steve, I don't know if you were in the room when I said, but if there are questions, let's stick to questions. If it's a statement, I'm going to limit people to three to five minutes maximum.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't in the room.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm repeating it for you.
Okay, so I have a statement.
Steven Drury, Drury Lane.
First of all, on the reclaiming of the, of the property that was in question, Muslim is, is the main webbing of the forest. And I would suggest that people go there and to the present places that have already been fulfilled from this company and dig down and see if there's any of that, because without that, then you don't have, you know, you don't have any reclaiming of the property. You have grass, and it just dies, and, and that's that. You have to have that. That is the whole web network, just like your veins of the whole entire planet. So that is so important, and I didn't see anything spoken to that in the, in the meeting. There's a lot of talk about reclaiming property, and that's the first thing you need to do, is to, to look for that. So you already have it ready to do. And my last thing, I had three, actually, but my, I'm not going to talk about one of them, Terry. The, the next one is virtual school. I've been watching you guys. Virtual school is the answer to our problem. We currently have all kinds of families bringing their kids to school at, you know, cars, and we're paying for, it's just stupid. The bottom line is, is K through twelve works, and no one is, is doing it. So I'm asking you guys to, to put a board together. You're going to save thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands, fifty thousand, who knows? It's going to be great. The bottom line is, is it's happening all over the place. It's been happening right along, and we do it, and I know our kids can do it, and it's going to be something that if we don't do it, then we're going to go under. And that's all I want to say, everybody, and I'm saying it to everybody.
Thank you, Steve. Public comment? Have a good night, Steve. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move into the meeting portion. We've got a couple of housekeeping items first on the agenda. We have meeting minutes for the meetings, selectmen's meetings for October ninth and October twenty-third. Yes, Terry?
Are you asking if we have any, I, I found four little errors.
Okay, Terry, they did hand out some revisions.
Well, what are her errors? Because she didn't change anything but one thing that I asked for.
Oh, Holly.
I found one thing, so what are Terry's errors?
Holly, you want to run through yours? I'm sorry, not Holly. Terry, do you want to run through your errors?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
So, um...
Which meeting first?
Five A under Introductions, Rhonda Parento is a her, not a him.
Okay, you're on the October ninth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So Rhonda Parento, the board welcomed him. It's the board welcomed her. Okay, and then under seven, Board and Staff Member Comments, there is no cost to Templeton or its residents for the use of the Winchandon landfill. There is a cost. It's seventy dollars, thirty-five after March, four dollars a large bag, and two dollars a small bag.
Seventy-dollar permit, four dollars a bag?
Seventy dollars for a year.
Yep.
Thirty-five dollars after March thirty-first. Four dollars a twenty-eight ounce bag, and two dollars a sixteen ounce bag.
Okay, what else you got?
Under October twenty-third, B, there's two chiefs, Fire Chief, Chief Dicky, that's minor, but there's two chiefs, chiefs. And then the big rog. On the next page, under six, Presentation, Community Services, it says Big Rog. Instead of Big Rock, Big Rog. Nothing major, but...
Where was that?
That's line two of the second page, under five E, Presentation of Community Services. A big rock in the town corner. It says Big Rog.
Big Rog. I just had a question on October twenty-third under C, but the budget needs to be decided by the end of the calendar year to get everything paid. Would it be more accurate to say by December? You know, like, that wording, to me, seems a little...
Yeah, that's too vague.
Diane, what?
That's too vague.
That's not really what was said.
So how should it read? How do you want it to read?
I thought it was supposed to be by December, um, I thought it was supposed to be December first or in the middle of, we had, I thought we had set a date.
Fourth, December fourth?
I, I forget, but it's not by the end of the calendar year.
Luann explained that they are doing what they can to be ready, but the budget needs to be decided by the first of December?
I thought it was December one. No, it's not December one. What was the date, Carter? It's not by...
We needed to have a tax rate set by December twelve.
Yeah, it's not by the end of the calendar year.
The bills need to be mailed by the end of the calendar year, so I don't recall the conversation. Exactly.
No, I don't, yeah.
It was the twelfth of a tax rate, and the bills had to be out by the end of the calendar year. We can go back and look at...
I would like to make a suggestion that we table the minutes and have them fixed and vote on them at the next meeting.
You don't think we can get it done with those corrections?
Let's add that.
All that?
Well, we're changing the date there.
What are we changing the date to?
The twelfth.
The twelfth, okay, so to December twelfth?
It's minutes, so it's the spirit of when we're trying to get that done, right.
I don't know what was said at the meeting. I don't recall what was said at the meeting.
But we understand what the context is.
So we have to look, so we have to, so Holly has to watch the video and actually put a date in there that was discussed.
Then you're right, then we should table them. I mean, we can actually table the twenty-third and go with the ninth.
Okay, so the ninth can be fixed, yes. So the cost can be, so there is, just to at least put that there is a cost. I mean, um, not to say that there's no cost, because there is a cost.
Yeah, amended to read that it, we would strike no cost, and we would add thirty-five dollars prior to March thirty-first, seventy dollars for the year, four dollars per bag for a twenty-eight ounce bag, and two dollars for a sixteen ounce bag.
They're gallon bags, thirty-two and sixteen.
We're just replacing the fact that there was no cost to that there is cost, and, and in enumeration.
The units were, were ounces, she said ounces.
Oh, gallons, 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 sorry.
Okay.
All right. Let's, let's table them.
Okay, so, well, if we just replace, because I don't remember that we spelled all that out at the meeting. I just remember they're saying that there was a cost. I don't know that we spelled out...
No, I think she went into detail at the meeting.
Okay, so we need to...
I had it all written down.
Okay, so we spelled all that out, so we can, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, October ninth, two thousand and nineteen, with the corrections that were just memorialized by Terry.
Okay. Second. Any further discussion? About gallons instead of ounces. Holly, do you have those, or do you, you want me to write them out? Okay. Jeff, you good? Okay, on the motion to accept, just the minutes from October ninth with the corrections in lines five A and seven, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well? And I don't think we need to vote to table.
No, I would just like to have those redone.
All right, we're going to table, Holly, we're going to table the, the minutes for the twenty-third, so we can get the...
And bring them back to the next meeting.
Yeah. And that was really the, the point of contention there was item five C for the, when Luann's explanation, so if we go back to the meeting and we just listen to what the date that she gave, okay? Okay, moving on, we have no executive session minutes to approve this evening. We're going to move into new business, item A, introduction of new employees, Mr. Terrence Zeeley.
We have none this evening for you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Annual committee appointments and vacancies. I think we had two to discuss this evening. Ms. Murray? Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Excellent. We have, for this evening, we have Capitol Planning, the at-large member. We have Aunt Amanda Murray. And for the Ethics Commission Liaison for, to the state, Mr. Carter Terrence Zeeley. Let's take these one at a time. Amanda, welcome. Do you, oh, she has a question. Terry? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to speak against the motion and... Mister Chairman, I wish to speak against the motion and uh, um, against um, appointing Carter
I'm not there yet though.
as ethics commission liaison at this time, and ask that it be tabled until after item five K on the agenda about gifts is determined.
What? She wants to move the item down. Um, I'm not there yet, uh, let, I wanna take care of the capital planning first, okay?
Okay.
Alright.
I didn't know, I thought we were doing both at once.
Nope. Um, capital planning, at-large member, Amanda, welcome.
Thanks.
Um, any, any words or, we, we, we saw your application, um, welcome to the team, we really appreciate. As Terry's really been uh, um, kinda like the tip of the spear for trying to get volunteers out there. Well, we've always tried to get volunteers, but uh, it's been a good push so far, so we, faith on the advisory committee and you on the capital planning, I believe you had your first informative session this evening?
Second.
Second, you've been, okay. Any, any further words?
I work with capital, I work with the housing authority in town, so we do capital planning, so I know how it all works.
Great.
And I do budgets and all that stuff, so.
Well, I'm excited.
Well, thank you.
So I make a motion to appoint um, Amanda Murray to the capital planning committee as a member at-large for a one-year term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? On the motion to appoint Amanda Murray to the capital planning at-large position for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Congratulations, welcome to the team.
Thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering, it's very appreciated, that's very important.
It is.
That's one of the real important committees.
It really is, actually, so.
And you've got a budget this year. Okay, um, Terry, we're up to uh, the ethics commission liaison, did you have uh, traffic? Did you have something to say, sorry?
Yes, sir, do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
I wish to speak against this motion and ask that it be tabled until after item five K on the agenda about gifts is determined.
Okay, did you um, did you have a reason to, to table it to the end?
Yep, yes. I'm just wondering what, that we should speak to, what happened with the gifts first? If there was anything that needs to be discussed about the gifts?
Can we move the discussion of the gifts up to this, so that we can have this discussion all at the same time? Because I would like to appoint Carter.
Okay. Do you have any reason to move item up? Do you have any reason not to move item up?
Oh, no. Put it up.
Okay, um, Terry, we're gonna move item K, we're gonna, we're gonna suspend item five B, and we're gonna go ahead and um, go into item five K, it's a discussion of the bond construction gift. Think I can, I can, I think I can take this one.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, we had talked at our workshop discussion to have a, an open discussion about the gift. I think there are a lot of, uh, the board of health.
Yeah.
I've watched the two hours and twenty-two minutes of the board of health meeting and I understand um, the um, the questions around this gift. So the facts that um, that appear to me is that we accepted three truckloads or a vast quantity, some ton, tons of blacktop, um, to which Mr. Skozik put in his weekly report. Everyone saw the weekly report where he basically thanked Bond Construction for this gift. Gifts are covered under fifty-three, actually, I think it was brought to our attention for what, the state, faith, did you send that email?
Yeah.
Okay, fifty-three, chapter fifty-three A and a half, because it is in-kind, not uh, not money gifts, which are supposed to be approved by the board of selectmen. Uh, the, the way that, that the gift went is that uh, onsite, Bond Construction saw that we were only going so far with uh, blacktop, but to a certain point, Bond Construction, knowing they were gonna have business or have a reason to have business, on Gavin Road said, we would like to make a gift to the town of Templeton to increase the structural integrity or add, add that amount of blacktop, all the way up to and including the, the junction at Gavin Road. Mr. Skozik made a call to the town administrator's office. The town administrator's office said you can accept the gift, not understanding that we did not have a process in place within the town to be able to have the board of selectmen vet such gifts and made that determination. No determination, no authority for anyone that would have any kind of licensure or permit granting authority made the decision to accept the gift. The only people that have authority are the board of health, they did not receive, they did not accept the gift. The board, the planning board, they did not accept the gift, nor did the board of selectmen authorize it as they should've, as a gift. So, we are going to put a process in place within our financial management plan that all gifts, as Terry alluded to, when we talk about our town financial processes, to make sure that this, that gifts of such size, now, we get gifts all the time, whether it's monetary or in-kind gifts. Um, the veterans' office directly across from this room, the wall went up because of a concerned citizen making sure that they had protection of personnel records, personal identified uh, information, PII. So they actually made a gift of, I thi, I believe it was a few hundred dollars. There was no process in time to make sure that any gifts coming into the town came to this board, as it says in fifty-three A and a half, to do that. So, the board, now knowing what occurred, is taking steps to make sure that this does not occur again. And that, and that's what I have to say, do you have any further questions? Jeff?
Uh, just, I'll speak to a couple of things. And I, and I get the point of your pointing out the gift of money for the wall, uh, but if that was a gift of funds.
Right.
That is covered on the chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, where any officer or department can accept a gift of funds. It's supposed to go to the treasurer, put in a s, special account and it can be spent with no further appropriation, no votes or nothing, as long as it goes for that purpose. And with regarding that gift of the hot top, and I kinda got the gist of this from the board of health meeting, and I, I I can't say definitively, I can't read mine, so, and I, I don't see any real indication of there was a quick pro quo, something for nothing. There might have been a thought.
It has, it had the appearance.
Of, you know, it has the appearance, but there might have been a thought in the back of somebody's head, you know, that this, maybe this will make the process easier. And I say that because there is an upcoming stormwater application permit and there is a Karen Hubix, Kyle, I probably butchered your name, but uh, of Bond Construction from Spencer, Mass. Uh, this was dated October, well, there's a couple of dates in it, but it's, I think it's October twenty-fifth is the date on this when it was handed in. Uh, the date exactly when that hot top was dropped escapes me, but it just, it just has the appearance of being bad. And as I had spoke to at the last meeting, I'd like to see in the financial management policies, as you stated, there's a section in there uh, that deals with grants. And who can accept what grant, up to so much money and after that, it comes to us. And, and I spoke to, I would like to see that, as Terry had mentioned. A section like that, to spell it out clearly in that policy, reference the Mass General Law and just have it clearly, again, have it clearly written out, this is the process.
Right.
And hopefully, you know, this doesn't happen again, and.
To build the transparency for.
And there's nothing we can do, we can't go close the bond door. You know, can't realistically go tear it up. I mean, if it was some lumber that was sitting there, you could say, hey, come get it. But, you know, and that, that's my first thought, is like, give it back, but you, you can't realistically go tear that up. The road would be worse than what it was before they dumped it.
Right.
So all this is, is a, do it this way, don't do that again, and put something in writing so in the future, we don't end up here. I'm, I'm glad, I, I like seeing people here, I like full meeting house, I, I welcome this, I wish it happened all the time. But I wish it wasn't for this reason, for an, an appearance of impropriety. That, you know, we, we can't undo what has been done, we can't close that bond door, but we can certainly address it moving forward. And just be uh, thoughtful of this uh, moving forward. Because that's, that's really what we need to, we have so many more important things to deal with on the plate that's gonna come in front of the people, uh, you got people from the advisory committee here, they know, they got something going on Thursday, we have a meeting coming, we got a budget, we already spoke to that, the tax rate, recaps sheet, the bills. As somebody alluded to in another conversation, the money to run this town, to get the roads plowed, to be able to pay your taxes, collect your taxes, do your abatement so you can pay less than property taxes. Get your health inspection, call up Laurie Weither and say, hey, I wanna do this in my backyard, come check it out. That money has to come from somewhere. And it comes from the thing that everybody hates to pay, and that's the real, the taxes, and the majority of it is from real estate taxes. So this is a small, a little small blip, important, but we have so many other more important things to, to worry about, again. Clear it up, fix it, so it doesn't, try, try to not repeat it again. And I understand everybody's concern and, and why they're here. So, I, I think that's, you know, the best we can do is to try to fix it and that's that. Thank you for the time.
Terry?
Yes, I, I kind of also would like to see after a certain cap that it goes out to the people. I know that in the, the last meeting, they said that's ridiculous, but I think that the people in town are smart and sometimes they may see things that as a board or an individual, we may not see. And if the gift is over a certain amount, we can set the cap or even ask for opinions on the cap, that it goes to town meeting before we accept any gifts, I just would like to see that in check. I also, I'm not exactly sure what this position is and if it would create an imbalance of power, if there's anyone else that could take the position, cause I didn't have a chance to research what exactly a liaison does. But it might seem like it could present an imbalance of power and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure, that's all I can say, is it, it could create an imbalance of power, which I wouldn't, you know, or create the appearance of an imbalance of power. And like Jeff said, we already have.
Terry, I, I wanna stop you because you're conflating two different items.
We don't need to be sidetracked.
So, Terry, I, I wanna prevent you from conflating the two different issues because they are not linked. You are linking them, but they are not linked. When we actually moved to do the ethics com, uh, commission liaison during the discussion for that, I, I, absolutely, if you wanna speak to that, but right now, we're talking about the agenda item for the bond construction gift.
Okay, alright.
But, on that, the first part of what you said was, um, I think the discussion for how we change the financial management policy is going to be important. I disagree with you that gifts would wind up going to a forum such as the town meeting for approval. I think uh, waiting on a town meeting cycle for accepting gifts, I think we would see far less gifts. Um, so I would rather see it, if it's in a public forum where we discuss a gift, especially with ones that have the appearance of conflict, such as the bond construction one, I think we could at least limit it to business meetings. What, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, I would say, ask the people in the audience right now what their thoughts are.
I, I, I will in a moment.
What my thoughts are, I, I, I just wanna hear what the town would think, I both, you know? I mean, I have my thoughts, but I'm here to represent the people of the town.
Okay. Diane, I think, yep, go ahead, please.
So I think that, um, Terry, by waiting, so we are paving a road and although there was um, an appearance of impropriety, if we had to wait for a fall town meeting, the road would not have been paved. If, if somebody wants to give money, um, I agree with Mike that we'll see far less gifts. Um, there's a reason that the people elected us, um, so that they would not have to do and conduct such matters. Um, I mean, they're, all the meetings are in public and, I mean, if it was a million dollars maybe, I, I don't know, but certain things would not be able to be done, they wouldn't get done.
I just think it speaks to the nature of where we are in time. People are always in such a hurry and mistakes get made that way. And I think we need to slow down. If we don't get some gifts, to me, sorry, we missed it or mi, I don't even feel like we missed it. I would say it wasn't meant to be, you know? In this day and age, mistakes get made because people are in a hurry. And I would prefer to slow down and enlist the, enlist people's opinions or advice, however you wanna take it, you know, and um, you know, maybe better things will come. You know, I, I'm not worried about missing something, I'm worried about making another mistake because I've moved too fast.
I think that's why we're gonna add it to the financial policy.
Yep, and, and, you know, Terry, to your point, I watched, um, I was not able to go to the, the board of health meeting. My wife was here for most of it and I watched all, uh, two hours, twenty-two minutes of it. I can at least think that Bond Construction benefits from doing that additional section of the road on ten, on uh, Royalston Road. But I can also assume that the, that many of the people that spoke out about it actually do wind up benefiting by having more area of the road that was first anticipated to accomplish. So, not everybody lost for it, it wasn't just a, uh, an act of impropriety, it was, it was a gift. It definitely had the appearance of um, a conflict. And again, I wanna make sure that every, if, if, if it, if it was not adequately accepted, we're accepting the fault for that and we are changing the process to make sure that doesn't happen. However, in light of that, the, 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 the boards that actually approve permits and otherwise, cause that's the act of impropri, impropriety that people had brought to our attention. None of those boards were involved with the acceptance of that gift. In the future, when it is the board of selectmen's purview, when we get that information, it would be. So, to question the board of selectmen adding three loads of blacktop would definitely be something to cause to come in and bang your fists about. Um, Terry, I am gonna open it up to some uh, public comment, but I'd ra, rather, yeah, I'd rather not go down another hour. Um, I, I, I just don't see it. I don't wanna spend three hours ba, barely talking about something that we already have the facts on. I know, and I said I'm opening it, I just don't wanna spend three hours doing it. Mr. Griffith, you had your hand up first. Could you, uh, could you come down to the microphone, please? I know who you are, but maybe people watching the, the meeting afterwards.
Who's responsible for accepting the gift specifically, name?
Mr. Terenzini.
Mr. Terenzini.
The, the town administrator's office, he is the chief.
You do, you do, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Has anybody evaluated Mass General Law two eighty-eight about bribes, accepting gifts, that kinda thing?
He's not in the position to actually approve anything to do with that. Say that again?
Are you suggesting, may I ask?
You may address him, yes.
Are you somehow suggesting that because I accepted a gift of asphalt to help extend the paving on a road, that that was a bribe for me to do something?
I'm.
I'm asking you that, sir.
No, I am.
The word bribe, so I'm asking you a straight question.
Oh, I, I know what, I know what you're saying, and I'm saying that I would like to know if it's, if it's been evaluated whether or not the accepting of this gift violates or does not violate Mass General Law two eighty-eight. It's a very long law. With a lot of little.
I will say without reservation, I did not violate the statute in any fashion whatsoever, two sixty-eight A or any other provision of the statute.
Okay, and you have no interest in helping Casella?
I have an interest in ensuring that any party that wishes to use their land in a lawful manner gets a fair, just and appropriate hearing before the several regular. gets a fair, just, and appropriate hearing before the several regulatory bodies of this community. Yes, I have that interest, sir.
So you're saying that your interest is in helping the town?
I would like to think so, sir, yes.
Okay, that's important, important to know where your heart lies. Is it with us? Is it with us because?
Yeah, he's answered that question already.
It makes a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Griffiths. Ms. Cover.
April Cover, Templeton. Would it be inappropriate to ask the board to seek legal counsel in regards to the acceptance of that gift in accordance to that law?
You want us to seek legal counsel?
Yep. To see if it was against the law that is in place in regards to towns accepting gifts. Just to get their opinion.
Okay.
And then I do have another question. I don't know if this is, if it's appropriate for me to ask. But in regards to the bylaws and who changes those, who actually types them up?
The actual bylaws?
Yeah.
We have several, I mean, Holly, you're involved with a lot of the bylaw, no?
I believe she's talking about the codification.
Okay.
Yeah, is that done within the TA's office also?
That was the company that was hired to do that, wasn't it?
Our bylaws have been, the bylaws themselves, it could have been written by a citizen. It could have been written by throughout Mass General Law. They've been in effect for a long time. We've had the book that Jeff.
Yeah, they bounce between different boards, the advisory committee takes a whack at it.
By written by legal counsel.
Overall, if there's a change made.
Yep, just one person speaks at a time. That's all I ask.
But overall, if there's a change made, isn't there a process, like who actually types up the new bylaw in the book? Is that done at the TA office?
Like the red line process, if something changes within the red line process, do you want to go through that again?
I don't necessarily need you to go through it again. I heard what you said. I guess my question is, bottom line, who types up the?
Okay, so.
Who types up that change?
I think I understand where she's going, like what actually, what goes into what's presented at town meeting? Is that?
What office made that change?
Okay.
The specific, the specific, are you speaking, April, to the change of the sanitary landfill law? Who made that choice? I was not on the board. It's like, like I said, I stated, I don't know who put that little note in that right-hand column and who decided to change that. I can't answer that.
So who amends those bylaws?
Well, I mean, it's a process, but to answer your question, if he says he's not on the Board of Selectmen, but he can say that it's the Board of Selectmen that winds up having the final, yep, this is ready to go, I believe that the Advisory Committee, there are several members here tonight, wind up getting copies to. You know, there's several people that actually go through this.
Okay, I just wanted to know, like, at the end, was it Carter's office?
Ask a question.
Like, was it Carter's office who made the final, who typed out the final bylaw? That's my question.
Well, I mean, Board of Selectmen meets regularly. I mean, we all work together, so you can say who actually does it. I rely on, a lot on the Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator and that entire office to do that work. If it wasn't for them, it wouldn't actually get done.
I'm just looking at the fact that you have a bylaw that was changed. Nobody knows who did it.
Yeah.
You have a gift that was received, which shouldn't have been per the law, and then now you have that same person possibly looking to go on.
Yeah.
Be the liaison for the Ethics Committee.
I think you're connecting dots.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, well, you could jump to that. It actually helps out a lot, a lot. So in turn, yes, Jeff?
If I may, I will speak to one bylaw, and I will correct myself. I can speak to one specific bylaw. And it was the bylaw concerning the Advisory Committee before the codification. It said one thing in that blue book. The wording that's currently in the present bylaw as a result of the codification, that came from the Board of Selectmen. The changes that were made came from the Board of Selectmen. And I got email records that, because the Advisory Committee had voted on, spent a few weeks, myself and Mr. Curry were part of that process, to change the existing bylaw before the codification. We submitted that to the Board of Selectmen back in February 2019. We heard boo from them, even though in the email, we expect this to go to legal counsel. If there's any questions, any concerns, any, you know, differences, let us know. We heard zero about that. The Board of Selectmen came up with changes to that specific bylaw and just stuck with it and put it in the codification. I know where that one came from. So if you're connecting dots, maybe you can assume that they were in on the rest of this. Certainly, they are the ones who approve what goes on the warrant in front of town meeting. That's the Board of Selectmen's, any town that has Board of Selectmen, that's their ultimate responsibility. So who made the specific change on that sanitary landfill? I don't know who did that. But general code from the record said it was okay as written. So somewhere between general code and town meeting, someone made a change. I guess that you want to know who did that.
I want to know who did it, and I think that you should be able to answer that.
So, I mean, we're talking about the bond construction gift, and I appreciate that you're trying to create like a detailed conspiracy where one man is actually pulling out a bylaw that's going to affect all these dissimilar things, and now, you know, you're seeing an uncovering of something like that. I detect no conspiracy, and I'm using the word, even though you said connect the dots, or I think I said connect the dots. But that's what you're trying to bring all these things together, is to say that it's some kind of conspiracy, that all of these things are changed for one purpose. I don't detect that.
Yeah, I think somebody's benefiting otherwise also.
Okay. But let me ask you this. As I said during, again, the bond construction gift, that person does not sit on any of the authorities that actually permit the, any of the things, permit, license, or otherwise. Do they, does that office prepare and touch things? Yes, they do. So I, again, I appreciate the fact that you're asking very detailed questions to say, who touches what document at what time during its life cycle on its way to codification. But I don't know, other than like a formal, you know, said, there's impropriety going on. I don't know what it's going to achieve to try and link all these things when I don't see evidence of that.
Well, I do. I've actually done a little bit of research. Can I ask Carter a question directly?
Does it have to do with bond construction gifts?
It has to do with his relationship with bond construction.
I'm not going to allow it at this time. I would like to actually take it offline. I understand what your concerns are, but I'm not going to turn the Board of Selectmen business meeting into court over the Town Administrator.
But I think it's very important, if you're going to appoint him as the Ethics Liaison, to know that he had a prior relationship with bond construction. He accepted this gift from bond construction.
Okay.
I mean, I think those are things that really need to be taken into consideration.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. So Terry, did you have something?
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but my problem with that, the wording in that Article 23 is, how and when did they put in that bio mix with neither garbage nor refuse? Because it has biosolids in it, and that is what bothers me the most about that article. And I know this is a business meeting, but it's, when was that stuck in? And I will address it at Board Member Comments. How's that?
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak behind this?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned as well, as while we're trying to, you know, how does bond construction feel about all this impropriety? This also affects them.
Right, I don't want to have court over there. I'd like to talk through facts that we have, right.
This affects them as well.
Mm-hmm. But I'm going to go, Mr. Terenzini, does the appointment need to be conducted for the Ethics Commission Liaison this evening?
No.
Okay. We're going to table.
I'll be happy to find the appointment, and the Select Board can find some other senior level employee of the town who is familiar with Chapter 268A.
And it bridges the gap for a liaison to a commission.
It is a requirement of statute. The issues are being conflated.
Okay.
And if you think someone else is interested in doing it and knowledgeable, by all means, let them take those tasks on.
All right, hearing nothing else from the public this evening on Agenda 5K, as we've moved it up, I'm going to move back to 5B for appointments and vacancies. 5B. What's the consensus for tabling it?
I think we should table that one for now, until you have some more information.
Jeff?
And you have a discussion?
I don't want to.
5B, you want to table the rest of it?
I'll just relinquish to the rest of the board. The main thing about that, the way that all came about was a Selectman, his name was Bob Mitchell, did some research, saw this law, saw that Templeton did not have that in place. So, and I think it came about that Rich Curtis, the EMD Director, volunteered to do that. And the main thing he was doing was, there's a requirement that all people who are elected, volunteer for boards committees, you have to take the ethics training test. You have to read, acknowledge that you understand the open meeting law. You have a copy of it, and you keep up with it. And every two years, you're required to do this. And Rich would send out an email to all town employees, all the volunteers. You need to do this so the town is in compliance. That was the biggest responsibility of that. And we weren't doing that, and people weren't taking those tests and following the requirements of the law, and Selectmen, at the time, Selectman Mitchell, you know, brought that up, thought it was important, and that's how we started following that law. And that was back in eleven or twelve, Julie? I think it was twelve, eleven. So that's.
So that's really the crux of where we're.
That's what they do.
Oh, then I'm making a motion, I'm sorry.
And the law says each municipality acting through its Council Board of Selectmen, designate a senior-level employee of the municipality as its liaison to the State Ethics Commission.
And we don't have anyone else.
I went to my opinion on the State Ethics Commission, but, you know.
Right, I think.
It's, and it's for six months.
I make a motion to appoint Carter Terenzini to the Ethics, as an Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you.
On a motion to appoint Mr. Carter Terenzini to the Ethics Commission Liaison, as Mr. Bennett detailed, the benefits and necessity for it to a one-year term to June 30th, 2020. Is there any further discussion? Hold on, let me get through the board first. Is there any discussion, Terry?
No.
Okay. Ms. Bartolomeo.
When is he leaving?
Say again.
When is he leaving? I mean, I thought Adam was going to.
That, you're a hundred percent correct. That is. Yep, he has been handing down.
For six months, till June 2020. He'll still be here.
That's what I asked, when is he leaving?
Like a date, like?
Is it prior to June? Prior to his?
Mm-hmm. It's part, I don't know.
My appointment is past this. The next trigger in my contract is October of 2020.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, on the motion to appoint Carter Terenzini to the Ethics Commission Liaison for a one-year term expiring June 30th, 2020, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Diane?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, moving to the next agenda item. This is the show cause hearing for Candlelight Cafe, alleged violations of liquor and entertainment licensing. When I open the meeting, we'll have the proponent for the alleged violation. We'll have the defendant for the violation. And then any recommendations by any town staff or board. The board will then be able to ask any questions. We will close the public hearing and begin deliberation and make a decision if we can. I will now open this public hearing, for show cause hearing for the Candlelight Cafe at 19:39 hours. Chief, I believe you're speaking on behalf of the town?
Chief is witness. I can speak.
Okay.
The Office of the Town Administrator made this application. Mr. Guerin did apply for and obtain several permits. However, he never picked them up. He never paid for them. They were not on the premises at the time this happened. And as such, a police officer or other party would not necessarily know that it was properly licensed. We do not believe that it was intentional. We don't think it was a overt action. Simply, we believe that there is a responsibility to bring to your attention violations of the statute and the licensing provision. I suspect Mr. Guerin will not forget to pay for and pick his licenses up in the future. But we do think that it's important that we uniformly apply these regulations across all of our applicants. And you have the report from the chief and his presence here this evening, should you have any questions with him.
Is there any additional testimony for the proponent? Mr. Guerin, do you want to come to the microphone and offer any comment for the opposition?
I really don't have any comment. I just didn't pick it up. Didn't remember to pick it up.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Terenzini, what is the recommendation of?
Well, our recommendation is what we would do with a, I mean, in this case, he actually applied for the license as opposed to people who don't apply for a building permit. But following that logic, when someone engages in activity without the properly issued license on the premises, it's doubled the fees. In this case, it was $57. Our recommendation is that those be doubled and that Mr. Guerin be pay $114, and we put a letter into the file along with the show cause, thanking him for his cooperation in being here this evening. Again, I want to reiterate, it was not, I don't think it was intentional. I don't think it was overt. But I do think that we have a responsibility to bring these to your attention, especially other matters that we have pending for the ABCC at this time.
Okay, yep, I agree. Are there any board member questions? Terry, any board member questions?
Not that I can think of at this time.
Okay. Any closing statements from either the proponent or the opponent? No closing statements? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the media, the public hearing for Candlelight Cafe at 19:43 hours. I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen institute the recommended fine of $57 on top of the $57 unrecovered fee for a total of $114 in the matter of Candlelight Cafe alleged violation of liquor and entertainment licensing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a comment.
Yep.
As was pointed out, he did apply for a license. He just, you know, didn't come in to get it. I'm also reading the write-up from the police officer, and he said he observed several people coming and going from the back of the establishment. So I don't know if all thirty were actually going in there and out of there, and it shows that it might not even been, you know, it's, to me, it doesn't show any intentional thing or nothing. He, a lapse in judgment, or I have spaced out moments all the time, so. And he did, he did apply, so he was trying to follow. He just goofed at your license.
It's your license, it's your livelihood and everything, so in the future, I hope you make a note to yourself, hang them on the whatever it takes to do it. So, we don't see you back here again. It's a small business, it's been there a long time, but you are a small business operator, and I don't like hammering on small businesses. And it wasn't really an intentional thing. They weren't taking cases of beer and walking up the street to another party, they were just little technical thing, and just be a little bit more vigilant on your part in the future, and I won't see you again here in front of the Board of Selectmen, I hope, all right? And thank you.
Agreed. Any further discussion? On the motion to fine Candlelight Cafe, the additional fifty-seven dollars on top of the fifty-seven dollar uncollected fee for a total of one hundred and fourteen dollars, that's been seconded, how do you find, or how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Any questions? Yeah, I would just work with Holly. But, you know, again, I agree with Jeff. I think it's basically a procedural item that I think we can clear up quite the same way that we deal with any other permits.
Thank you, Mr. Guerin.
Yep. So, Holly's your point of contact.
Oh, he's ready to pay.
Oh, I know, okay.
That's probably not, that's out of the norm, probably.
Right, and it didn't say that, except check on my script, so.
Extended office hours, that's all.
I'm sorry.
He doesn't want it to happen again.
Oh, okay.
Voids interest that way, too, no penalties.
I'm gonna move to the next, this evening, we have a presentation, item five D, Green Communities Energy Reduction Plan. You're on.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. My name is Karen Chapman, I'm a planner at the Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission. I, on your behalf, I applied for a technical assistance grant for you to become a green community. So, this is all free to the town. I have a quick, hopefully quick slideshow.
Yeah, I think we have a copy of your slides in our packet as well, so thank you for pushing that to us ahead of time. So, that therefore, so therefore, if we have the data.
There we go. Carter hopefully sent you all of the attachments that I sent to him last week. All right, so I said it's made possible through a grant. The application is actually due November twenty-second. There's five criteria required for designation. Criteria one, as of right citing. Criteria two, expedited permitting. Criteria three, energy reduction plan, which is what we're here for your vote for. Criteria four, fuel efficient vehicles, and criteria five, stretch code adoption. Just gonna quickly go through these. So, criteria one, as of right citing, you're required to cite renewable alternative energy generating facilities, R and D facilities, or manufacturing facilities. Templeton allows light manufacturing in their CIA and CIB zoning districts by right. We've identified three parcels in the CIB district, because you have to show that, that not only do you have land, but it's feasible to build a fifty thousand square foot facility. Criteria two is adopt an expedited application and permitting process for, for the, for the items in criteria one. So, your light manufacturing only requires a site plan review, so there's no special permit, no variance, nothing like that. Documentation of compliance with both of these criteria is a zoning map, the zoning section's description, zoning definitions, yield calculations for the parcels, and a legal counsel letter. So, Lori and I provided all of those things to town councils so that they could provide the letter, I believe. You have the letter.
Yep.
I'm gonna skip for you for now and go to criteria four, which is fuel efficient vehicles. You've adopted a fuel efficient vehicle policy, and the school system has as well. You're supposed to develop and maintain a vehicle inventory, which we have. Lori is also helping me on that. Provide a plan for replacing non-exempt vehicles with vehicles that meet specific fuel efficiency ratings. And that's part of the fuel, fuel efficient vehicle policy.
Karen, can you go back one slide?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So, like I said, the, the selectmen and the school system have passed the policy, the inventory is completed, and the plan for replacing is in the policy.
Yep.
Criteria five is adopt the stretch code, which you did in October of eighteen. I've requested the certified vote from the town clerk and have received that. So, now we're gonna go to criteria three, which is why we're here in front of you tonight. So, you're supposed to establish an energy use baseline inventory, and the state provides a mass energy insight database, where you input all of the energy use for the town, which includes buildings, vehicles, street and traffic lights, open spaces, water and sewer assets. So, the fuel types, gasoline, diesel, electricity, propane, heating oil, and wood chips. And so, Lori was instrumental in helping me get all of this information from everyone in the town that uses energy.
A lot of the data I went through, it was a lot.
It's a lot of data. So, some statistics, Templeton has thirteen buildings, fifty-six vehicles, five hundred and eleven streetlights, thirteen traffic lights, nine sewer pump stations, and two open space areas. The total energy use, I guess I forgot to put it in there, but it's on the next slide, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight million BTUs. So, what the MEI system does is it takes all the fuel units that are in the native units, like gallons or kilowatt-hours or thermes, and it converts to MM BTU, so that you can compare all the categories and put them together.
Right.
So, you're total.
Like a total.
Total usage for everything.
Can I hang on one sec?
Yes.
Ms. Culver, Ms. Farrell? I, I am, if you're, are you leaving? All right, I was gonna address something with you just afterwards.
Okay, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
Can she, can Terry see that?
No, but I have your report in my folder.
Okay.
How about that?
I just realized she's looking at me.
Right, but I do have it in my folder, right? Is this in the folder?
Yeah, it's a different, it's, it's the same tables, it's just in a slideshow format, but a lot of the data is the same.
I did actually read about how many cruisers, and I did read this, and it was like, whoa, a lot of work.
Terry, does it help if I, I made it so you could watch the screen, does that help, or would you rather look at Karen? All right, I'm gonna move you back to Karen.
So bright, I can't, I can't see it, it's fine, thank you so.
Yeah. I'm sorry, continue.
So, you're on, I know you're in section three.
She is.
Right?
Right.
And we did the build, you did buildings, you passed, you passed that, so where are we now?
So, we're on table two, summary of municipal energy use.
Okay, thank you.
Table, so it shows the buildings, vehicles, traffic lights, and it shows how much use for each of those categories. And so, the yellow items are unfortunately what we don't have yet. Let me go to the next slide so I can explain. So, the other part of criteria three is to adopt the energy reduction plan, which we're talking about tonight, to demonstrate twenty percent reduction in energy use over the next five years after designation. So, Lori and I were able to write a small grant to get money to pay for audits for all of your buildings. And so, the projects that we get back from the audit reports, there were three, three audit sections. There was building envelopes, so weatherization type of things, insulation, weather stripping. Then there was another part that was building mechanicals, such as the HVAC and things such as that. And then there was lighting. So, there were three sections of the audit, three different companies that did this. And so, in order to get all the information back, they provide us with information that goes into this table. And this is the table that we, I know you can't see it, but I gave you one there that you can actually read, it's on the eleven by seventeen. So, what happens when we get the audit reports back, we put all this information into that table, and down at the bottom, it adds up how many MM BTUs you would save by doing those projects. So, as I said, this yellow here, we're waiting for, we've gotten the lighting, we've gotten the mechanical, we're just waiting for the envelope audits, and they said, hopefully this Friday, but definitely next week. So, I will be filling in those numbers, but I'm here tonight to request you to vote on it, because the application's due next Friday.
Okay.
You're, you're, you can vote on a contingent on seeing this spreadsheet next week when I get it done, or, I mean, that's the only information that I'm waiting for in this report.
The, the data isn't what we would be voting on, it's basically determining what is our baseline and what are our goals to reach.
Right.
Cause at one point during, you know, during, looking at the data, it was, all right, I gotta get five hundred BTUs or whatever the, whatever the amount was, and then it's basically the plan that all of the signatories, all the stakeholders basically sign on to say, I will adopt the no idling policy, I'm gonna shut off lights, you know, we're gonna have a, Dr. Kazivan signed his portion of this as well. So, it's not the data that I would be worried about, it's just making sure that we get in and on time.
Okay.
So.
So, let me just, so like I said, the energy, total energy usage is thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight MM BTUs. So, that twenty percent, you'd have to reduce six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four MM BTUs, and that could be out of any of the categories.
Is that over time?
That's over five years.
Sixty-two hundred, is that over a period of time?
Yes, over the five, after you're designated.
Okay, cause I was queuing, queuing in on like, it was like a five hundred per year or something like that. At least that's one of the data points that I saw.
Okay. It's sixty-two fifty-four over the five-year period, and they don't kick you out if you don't make it. There's only a small percentage of communities that have actually made the twenty percent.
Yep.
By including the schools in your application, that helps, because they're such large buildings.
Yep.
So, like I said, that's the table that goes along with it. And like I said, the ERP must be adopted by you and the school district. And lastly, for the designation grant, you could get, the base is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then they add a little bit based on per capita income, so it could be one twenty-five to one thirty-five. So, what happens is you apply next week, they hopefully do the designations in December. At that point, they'll tell you what your money is.
Yeah.
And then, you as a town, with my help, just prioritize all the projects, and decide what you're gonna spend that one twenty-five on first.
Right.
And then, after you exhaust that money, usually takes a year, a year and a half, you can apply for a competitive grant, which is every year you can apply for that, and that's up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
To basically fine tune what we've done after.
Right, you've done these projects with your designation grant, and now you have all these other projects left to do, so we're gonna apply for a competitive grant at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I was going. I was looking only at the baseline year, it was a reduction of seven oh one, so that's what I was keying in on by, it was an annual rather than the five-year plan that you gave us.
And so, that's it for my, if you have any questions?
I think the only question I have is really on our side. The slide that I had you refer back to, that's the legal opinion piece, I just didn't, I wasn't, I didn't see it in my packet. But those are the things that you need.
It was completed.
Okay.
Yes, in fact, I worked with.
So, we vote, I sign?
Yes.
Okay.
I worked with your town council, back and forth.
Yep, it was the only one that I didn't see.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
No, just comments, like, I thought I read through the whole report and it was nicely done. And that's a lot of work, and kudos to the both of you.
I just want to publicly thank Lori, she was a huge, huge help. Also, Pam Rogers, the DPW director, whose name I'm forgetting right now. Rick Moulton, Mallory Seaman helped me a lot.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry if I forgot anybody, but, you know, the people in the town have been a good help. But it is, it is a lot of work.
Yeah, you could tell, but it was, the report was nicely done.
Well, thank you. They, they give you a format, and that's the format you have to follow.
Right.
If you don't, they say.
Well, yeah, they're, right, I kinda figured that, but the report was well done.
So, I can, once I get the, the rest of the audit reports, I will send to you, I'll send to Carter that spreadsheet, so you can see what the projects are and how much it's gonna cost, how much it's gonna save.
Yep. Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to see it before it goes out, but certainly don't wanna stand in the way. I mean, I, I think we, you get a sense that the board is on board with this, but I wouldn't wanna hold up the process.
All right.
I'll entertain a motion.
Let me see, I, I make a motion to approve the Green Communities Grant Application as presented, and for the chairman to sign.
Excuse me, please, point of order. Can you just make the motion, say we approve the energy reduction plan as?
Yep.
Just a technicality, cause that's what the letter says that you voted.
I make a motion to approve the energy reduction plan as presented, and for the chairman to sign.
Second.
Does that make?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yep, I have a motion and a second to approve the energy reduction plan that will go into the, the application process. Yep. Any further discussion? Do we still have, did I hear her?
No.
Uh-oh.
She dropped off.
She's gone.
She's gone.
She skipped town. I blame her.
Should I give Skype five stars?
No, give him three and a half.
Thank you, Holly.
Hopefully she'll call back in, she called into this?
No, Holly called her.
Who called her? I mean, she should be able to call back.
I just can't see it upside down.
So, Holly can, you can scan that and send it to me?
Thank you.
Ms. Cul, Mrs. Culver, am I pronouncing it right? Culver, okay. Hang on one sec.
Sounds like a submarine.
That, that sound in Skype, I think, she may not have any more connection, or else it would actually ring. So, she may have lost wifi or whatever.
That's long enough to ring. She's unavailable.
Okay, but we still have our, we still have our call. Okay, just revisiting the public comments during five K. We started getting a little, you know, the mercury was rising. What I would say, I, I stand by what I said, I didn't wanna turn this, this business meeting into a, into a court session where we don't have facts or anything like that. What I would ask, if you do have a concern, would you please file a complaint with the town? And I, and we would be happy to, to, to receive that. I didn't make that decision to stifle any comment or otherwise, but this board was not prepared to go into that level of discussion.
I wasn't, I was just looking to see, I was, I was trying to connect the dots, but I didn't, I wasn't looking to accuse anyone of anything. I was just, I wanted to connect the dots.
Okay.
Who did the bylaw, do you know what I mean?
Yep.
I'm not.
I didn't get to answer that question.
Okay.
The town council and the Board of Selectmen did that bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I didn't get to answer that because then Mike wanted to move on.
I appreciate that, that's, that's all I wanted to know, like, I wanted to know the change.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, we, I just, we, we don't, although, I think what this board has done. Is she gonna call back or?
She's on here.
Okay. What this board, I think, has done with, with this, this class of selectmen is that we have been very open to public comment and to make sure that, that we have enough time. Terry, I know she's back on, but Terry asked about how much comment are we going to allow? Within the space and confines of, of how we run the meeting, yes, we do allow. Within the space and confines of, of how we run the meeting, yes, we do allow a lot. But we also, we don't operate great if we don't have information, or we're basically deer in the headlights for certain information that we may not have a background on. I did comment on the things that I did have information on, so there wasn't any kind of withheld stuff. But if, if you could, if you have a concern, please, please send of, uh, uh, whatever you wanna call it, a formal complaint, an issue or otherwise.
To the Ethics Committee, which is Carter, like.
And, and we, we chaired that, we tabled it, so we, if we have to have further discussion, I, say, oh, I'm sorry, we did not, we actually voted, okay.
We voted on it.
So we voted on it. But, but please send, but I wanted to reattack that.
Send it directly to the Ethics Commission.
Yeah.
Yes.
You send it directly to the Ethics Commission, you don't send it through here.
I'm not saying I'm going to, but I'm just saying, would that be, I don't know the change, you know what I mean? I don't know the processes, that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah, and I think.
Like, if I honestly thought that Carter had done something and I had sufficient facts to balance that, I already would've filed.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't, I don't, I was just asking questions.
Okay.
I wasn't accusing anybody of anything.
Okay.
I was just asking questions.
Yep. Um, so again, if, whether you, whether you're, you know, filing a complaint, or you have, you know, give us, give us something ahead of time. And I think this, this board and previous boards have done that, if they're unable to ask questions or unable to proceed in that manner at that time, we can basically reattack it at a later meeting. Okay, I'm gonna move on with the agenda.
You're welcome.
Um, we're up to five, five E, five echo, uh, request for a DOR Financial Management Review, Mr. Terenzini?
Uh, ten years ago, this past month, the Town of Templeton, uh, received a document entitled, "The Financial Management Review of the Town of Templeton." It was carried out by the Department of Revenue. Uh, the town has, uh, made substantial progress, uh, on that. Um, and I am just suggesting, uh, that the town take advantage of this service offered by DOR to have another look back, I'm sure that we've made a lot of progress, uh, in that ten years, the town's adopted a number of, uh, the suggestions. And, uh, I think the town could benefit from another look, uh, of where we are at this point in time, uh, given best management practice, changes in statute, uh, and, uh, progress yet to be made perhaps. And so that's why we are requesting that you seek this review. I, I would say that, uh, the group that does it, uh, I'm told, has got quite a substantial backlog, so it could be well into twenty twenty
Right.
before they're even able to undertake the review.
Yeah.
Uh, so it could be a year before you see the results of it.
I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to, um, to send the letter to, um, Deputy Commissioner Cronin to have another DOR Financial Management Review for the Town of Templeton.
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Uh, any discussion for the, uh, request for DOR to come in and, and take another look?
Uh, since the passage of the Municipal Modernization Act, it would, that changed a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
It'd be a good thing to do, the timing is good.
I think that, uh, we've, we've been continually going around on the, the right path in terms of trying to get audits done on time, trying to, trying to really right the, uh, the ship, kinda, so to speak. Any further discussion, Terry? Anyone in the audience? Okay. On the motion to request the DOR's Financial Management Review, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, item five F is on the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Acquisition of Land. Um, the map, I know, was made available in the packet that was available online for that ninety-page, uh, so those who have looked at it online, uh, uh, know that it is along Royalston Road, north of Royalston Road, and the other parcel of land is abutting Templeton State Forest. Um, I would say due east of the Peace, Peaceful Meadows, Peaceful Meadows Camp, Campground?
Peaceful Pines.
Any, um, any further clarification, Mr. Terenzini?
Uh, simply, this is a requirement of statute and Massachusetts regulation, uh, that the Select Board make this announcement in an open meeting, that the Department of Conservation and Recreation is interested in acquiring, uh, these two parcels of land. I would note, these are the two parcels of land that the town, uh, has been authorized to sell to DCR. Uh, and, uh, we can take, uh, up to a hundred and twenty days, but by acting tonight, uh, we can, uh, shorten up that process, uh, a bit. Uh, this also goes to the delegation, I've spoken, uh, with, uh, Henry Kahn, who's the Chief of Staff for Senator Goby, they have signed off. Uh, and it has gone to the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, uh, spoke with Glenn Eaton, and they have signed off, uh, as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, and I would respectfully request, uh, that the board, having announced, uh, the DCR interest in acquiring these two parcels of land from the Town of Templeton, uh, that you, uh, move to notify the department, uh, you have no objection, uh, and to, um, sign the certificate, uh, waiving the full one hundred and twenty-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion in a second to, uh, notify DCR, um, the, the letter would read, "The clerk of the Board of Selectmen, Town of Templeton, do hereby certify that on today's date, it was announced at a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen that the Department of Conservation and Recreation might acquire an interest in a parcel of land located in Templeton as shown on the attached locust map marked as an Exhibit A," and I basically gave a general description of where both parcels are. Discussion. Terry, you have the map, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It says peaceful pines, that's sound, I mean.
Yep. Hey, hearing no further discussion on the motion, uh, I'm sorry.
It's alright, um, how much land is already in conservation?
In town?
Right.
Oh. I was ready to answer, how much land is it, and I was ready to throw it right back, twenty-seven acres.
How many, twenty-seven?
Say again?
Is it twenty-seven?
It's twenty-seven is being proposed, a- as far, as far as conservation land in Templeton total, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to.
How much land in Templeton is off the books, basically?
Right.
DCI doesn't pay taxes.
I'm sorry, Beverly?
DCI doesn't pay taxes.
Pay what?
Taxes.
Okay. I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
Just against this.
I, I would only note, the Town of Templeton does not pay taxes to itself either. Uh, and that the state would now begin to pay, uh, a modest, uh, added three dollars or something in our pilot. As to what is the total acreage of land in conservation, I'd have to talk to Luanne on that, I, I wouldn't know that off the top of my head, I'm afraid. Happy to get you that answer.
Good question.
Yep, it is a good question.
Would that include open space?
Say that again?
Would that include open space?
Um, conservation land and open space, I don't know if the, not being a, in a subject matter expert on it, I don't know if those two are mutually exclusive or not. Conservation and open space.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
What is the potential of the state, like, you know, considering how, I think we have, I think, I used to know how many acres Templeton was, is rather. And then what happens when we sell to the state, what happens to, to, to our, you know, our town, our boundary line? Good question.
Was there a question?
No, she was just making.
I don't know what happens.
Oh, okay.
She was just making a statement, she doesn't know what happens. What happens to our boundary lines, what happens to, she doesn't know what happens.
Okay.
Well, our corporate boundaries do not change in any fashion.
Right.
Wherever they are today, they are there tomorrow. Uh, this land of twenty-seven plus or minus acres, uh, is being added to approximately four hundred and seventy-five acres that the state has already acquired. Um, Terry was at the, um, I, I don't know if you wanna call it grand opening ceremony or whatever here about, uh, four weeks ago. Uh, the combined acreage of five hundred or so, uh, was a threshold they needed to get to, uh, to acquire a substantial grant. Uh, this was presented, uh, and voted on by the town meeting, uh, the authorization to sell these two parcels.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's simply being combined with other DCR lands, uh, in the state forest, uh, and joining.
Yep. Holly, did you get the questions, at least into the minutes?
Which ones?
Um, town, uh, total of town, uh, acreage for conservation and open space?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure those make it into the minutes, is there any further discussion from the board? Audience? Okay. On the, the motion made, uh, to send DCR the memorandum of notification that's been seconded, how do you vote, Jeff?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. What time do we have, eight sixteen? Uh, we're moving on to agenda item five G or five golf, use of insurance proceeds under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three. Mr. Terenzini?
Uh, so, uh, many years ago, when the town, uh, had an insurance check, it had to go into general revenues, and then you had to find monies within your budget, uh, or get a supplemental appropriation to make the repairs. Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, uh, allows insurance proceeds, in my recall, as it's under a hundred thousand dollars, to be used towards those repairs if the chief executive officer, uh, of the town, uh, permits so. Uh, in this case, uh, we have received the check, we're about seventeen hundred and fifty dollars, uh, short. Uh, this is an accident, uh, at-fault accident, uh, with our ambulance. So the chief is requesting, uh, your, uh, permission to, uh, use the proceeds that we have so far, um, from the insurance company to commence the repairs. Uh, he'll make the balance out of his budget, and then hopefully next week, uh, at the Fall Town Meeting, we'll backfill that seventeen fifty, uh, that he was short.
How mu- um, through the chair, how much was the check?
My action is, uh, it was around six thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we had the deductible, then we had to have, um, it, it was actually cheaper for them to come and get it than for us to try to drive it to the shop, take somebody off shift, uh, and do some other things. Um, and then there's a, the seventeen fifty contains a small, in case they find something when they open the repair up.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, any discussion?
I move to approve the use of the insurance proceeds under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I think Terry said second.
Did Terry second, okay, I have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Yes, second.
Any discussion? Any discussion, Ms. Bartel O'Neil?
I don't understand why you don't use the reserve fund, then you wouldn't have to backfill his budget, so with the monies for, just my, uh, on it.
Okay. Terenzini?
Uh, this is a philosophical difference that I've, uh, had with, um, uh, different folks, uh, throughout the years I've been here. The reserve fund is the only account that can be used, for whatever reason whatsoever, in between town meetings. Uh, in this instance, we have the free cash, we have the upcoming town meeting, and, um, my personal philosophy is that we should try to preserve the reserve fund as deep into the fiscal year as we can. Uh, because we have no other way, once we get past the Fall Town Meeting, until we get to the annual town meeting, or then, uh, the May, um, or the, yeah, May fifteenth, the window that opens up when the board and the advisory committee can make statutory transfers. Mr. Chair?
There's, there's the, go ahead.
Uh, normally, I would disagree with Carter on this item, except this year, uh, where we're seeking special legislation, we have an unknown budget, and we have twenty-one right around the corner. Uh, we don't know what the state's gonna let us do, what can come up in, in this particular year, where we have an, really, an unknown, and we, we may get walloped one way or another, we may have to borrow money to cover, you know, a tax anticipation note. So, in this instance, this year, I would say, leave the reserve fund alone, just in case, cause we have some big things that unknowns in front of us money-wise, and it's, it's less than fifty grand, it's not. Uh, we, we have too many unknowns this year, I, 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 I agree, I don't like to see the backfill and that stuff, but this instance, this year, uh, we had some big unknowns in front of us money-wise, and that's one, one source that we have, if we have to cover something where we don't need to have a town meeting, to spend money, to spend money. That's, that's a source where this board and the advisory committee can, can use without, you know, great expense, so.
Yes, Mr. Terenzini?
Um, if I might, uh, just, I, I want Jeff to know that in three items, I am going to provide some positive news to the board that will reduce the fiscal uncertainty to some degree. That said, I would stand by my position on deferring use of the, uh, reserve fund as deep into the fiscal year as possible, but I do have some good news coming here, Jeff.
Alright.
Well, back to you respectively, but, yeah.
Okay.
Talk about that later.
Okay. Um, we have a motion in a second to use the proceeds under Mass General Law, forty-four fifty-three, any further comment or question? Okay, on that motion, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Terry?
She's still there?
No.
Diane?
Yes.
And I, I vote yes as well. But, I think we lost her? Holly, you got a unanimous on that one.
Terry, you there?
Yes, yeah, do you hear me?
Yes, how do you vote?
Okay, yes, sorry.
Okay, and you know, you're voting on the use of the insurance funds, correct?
Yes, I voted yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item five, H five hotel, uh, report of the IAC, uh, with respect to the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust proposal. Mr. Terenzini?
Uh, we had retained, um, NFP, an insurance consultant earlier this year to work with the Insurance Advisory Committee on a number of fronts. Uh, one of those, uh, efforts, uh, in an attempt to continue to provide quality product at a reasonable price, both we and the employees, uh, could, uh, handle within our respective budgets, uh, was we asked them to look, uh, at the possibility of joining a joint purchase group. This is where a number of municipalities, school districts, water districts, prudential districts, uh, combine to purchase insurance. Uh, three were looked at, um, uh, Ashburnham, Westminster, I think, Neshoba was spoken about, though no great detail, was provided on, uh, and then Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. Uh, the first two, the benefit platforms really were not as, as comparable, uh, and the pricing was, uh, equivalent or more to what we were paying. The third group was the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, it's existed since, uh, the mid-fifties, has over seventy member municipalities, um, covering eleven thousand active and retired. It has over seventy member municipalities, um, covering eleven thousand active and retired employees and dependents. It is the second largest public insurance trust in the state of Massachusetts after Maya. It provides a Blue Cross plan, as does Maya. The rates are substantially lower than ours. Uh, on the, uh, single side, upwards of twenty-five percent lower. On the family side, around fifteen. And it has a nice feature in that for seventeen, uh, of our employees, they would be able to get a lower-priced plan of a one-plus-one. So, with Maya, we have singles and we have families. That's it. With Hampshire, you have single, one-plus-one, and families. Uh, their retiree plan is also about five percent lower than ours. Uh, so, uh, after two meetings, if I recall correctly, um, the group, uh, voted unanimously, uh, to recommend that the Board of Selectmen, approach the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust to see if it would be, uh, willing, uh, to entertain allowing us to join. So, you would know in mid-May, or January, excuse me, yes, we'll take you, or no, we won't. And here's what the rates are. You would then have another month to decide if you were going to jump in. You know, some questions on risk. I think it may have been Tom, uh, that raised it.
That's the question I had.
Uh, they can ask you to leave in the first year. If they've, because we don't have good data, because we're such a small group, they can't get the actual data. We want to explore further, what would be the risks that they ask us to leave? Uh, should they ask you to leave, you would then have to go procure insurance elsewhere for two years, till you can back into, uh, get back into Maya. Uh, so, you got, um, two more decision points?
Or that's the risk?
It'll be, that's the, I mean, it'll be what it is at the point that you put it out to bid.
Yeah.
The, I, I don't want to judge what I heard. Tom, um, do you remember Tom's, or Joe? What's his last name? The director? Well, Ken's the insurance consultant. Remember when the executive director came up?
Oh, Joel Shay?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I don't want to, uh, try to portray what I thought I heard him say. But you've got time yet to have more information gathered for the insurance advisory committee to make a deeper, um, consideration of this. So, step one is, do we approach Hampshire to see if they are willing to take us? That truly is tonight. That's a tonight decision.
Okay.
Step two is honor about January fifteenth. They will say, sure, we'll take you, and here's what your rates would be. In early February, we would hope to have the Maya rates. And so, it's your first board meeting of February, or by February fifteenth, I don't, did he give us a hard date? But mid-February, yeah. At some point mid-February,
Right, we would have.
We'd have to decide, yes, we're in. Um, and then that is the, the program for a year. I've got, Holly's the chair. Uh, Tom sits on the committee. I think some of the work that he did is in your package. I don't know if you want to let, uh, either of them speak to this.
Unanimous, yes, is what I understood. So, I guess the only question I have is, what, what goes into experience rating? I mean, is, what level of risk are we taking? I know you said we don't have enough data for it, but
We have to have some data.
An experience rating?
You, you're, you're not going to get any data. You're going to get, from Maya, the best you'll get is you paid us X in premium, we paid out Y.
Okay.
That's, that's all you're going to get. They're not going to give you individual, um, data.
Okay.
And they will not, they will not provide that to other insurers. Right now, we're not doing quite as well as last year. But our premium payouts are below a hundred percent of the premium payouts.
Holly, you going to say something?
Yeah, from, from what I took out of what he said, I don't believe they've ever turned someone away.
Not yet.
And the risks sounded very small. It's, it's if there was a catastrophic illness.
Mentioned, so I figured I'd ask, yeah.
Yeah.
What goes into that?
Well, everyone was kind of concerned about that, too.
Right.
So, it sounded like the risk was very minimal.
Right, okay.
But the insurance advisory committee has asked Ken to circle back and see if, you know, is there any way you can put a sharper point on that?
Yeah.
I think's probably the best way to put it.
Well, I think there's really no way to control that risk, because it's basically, you're at the whim of what your data is presented to, uh, to New, uh, what is it, New Hampshire?
It's the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust.
Okay.
I guess I would be concerned that we would be asked to leave and we would have to find someone else for two years and our rates would skyrocket. And, uh, this town cannot afford that.
You, with due respect, you cannot afford to continue to pay Maya at a six percent rent rate every year. And, uh, we need to try some, well.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't. So, so we, we could hopefully look at Maya rates same time. There's no way we can continue to pay Maya, because it's too much money. So, they can ask you to leave within that first year, or you're guaranteed a year? Are you guaranteed a year? It sounded to me like it, it sounded to me like it was guaranteed a year.
That was, that was our understanding.
A two-year, that you can go back to Maya. So, there would be one year you would have to
Go out to bid.
Find something else. So, one year.
And again, the IAC has asked us to put a finer point on that, and I know that Ken will come back. I think he's, I think he's been responsive to what the group has asked him to research.
'Cause from what I looked at in here, it's definitely a positive for the employees, too, because their fees looked, um, less as well. So, it's just.
There's, there's some minor changes
Yeah, I did notice that.
In the benefit platform.
Well, you can't, you can't happen all.
Substantial on both sides of the house.
Sorry, Terry.
Go ahead, Terry.
Sorry. That was my question. Is the savings on a, uh, to the families equivalent or better than the, um, what they lose on their co-pays and whatever prescriptions?
So, by way of example, an individual, um, for us is around eight hundred bucks. Does that sound about right? And they're going to be around six hundred and change, almost a two-hundred-dollar difference, which means the employee saves fifty dollars a month, which is six hundred dollars a year. The major difference between the plans is that the employees would have a one-hundred-dollar deductible against their drugs per year. They save six hundred, they spend a hundred. If they have to use it, they're five hundred bucks ahead. I mean, we, we have, we have more work to do on this, uh, but we also have time to do that. The thing we don't have time to do is to ask them if they're willing to take us. That, that window is closing rapidly.
And would the employees themselves be able to, you know how open enrollment, would they be able to look at these things themselves? Or is it all directly on our shoulders?
It's, it's all new open enrollment. And we do open enrollment now every year as a requirement.
Okay. So, could they, would they give us feedback?
I didn't hear a question.
You are the democracy on this issue. This.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. It falls on our shoulders.
And I want to be clear, this, this is like if you're going out to buy a car. You're asking the salesman, will you sell me this car? And he is, at this point, going to say yes in January and tell you how much he'll charge you. And then you still have thirty days to decide what you want to do. There is.
And, but we, but we don't have thirty days to, uh, join Hampshire Trust. So, it's better to put it out there and then make the decision down the road. If Maya comes with a better offer, that's kind of what you.
Pretty, pretty much. There is no other area in your budget where you have an opportunity to save money without laying people off.
Wow. Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
I make a motion to support the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee and direct the town administrator to have the application submitted to the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes, uh, just, actually, just a, a comment. So, the employees are on board with this and it will, I mean, the Insurance Advisory Committee, which is a representation of employees and a retiree, and they will get comparable coverage for savings, for less money. It will equate to less money that the town will spend or appropriate, which, it's not going to save money, it's just going to take money and free it up to be applied somewhere else where things are going up, such as the retirement cost.
Right.
So, who dares wins. We tell them we want to get in the door and look around.
With unmanageable risk that's
Yes.
It would be, it's shared by each, you know, person that would adopt it.
So.
Hang on.
And the Insurance Advisory Committee will, in July, uh, January, excuse me, with another two months of knowledge and the actual rates in hand, provide you with another recommendation.
Yeah, that's low-brainer. Terry, anything else?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm good. It was a little difficult to read it and not have any background, but it's been thoroughly explained. I'm pretty good.
Thanks, Terry. Mrs. Culver.
Is there any way that you can request a two-year contract to cover yourselves in case, you know? Because you were saying the other insurance company, if you leave them, there's two years prior to you being able to go back.
Right.
Can you incorporate a two-year timeframe within your new?
No, they give you a one-year membership and then you are out. Once you're past two years, then you are in forever.
So, look, all in.
It's, it's to try to protect them against unknown risks, because we can't supply them with claims data. So, the only way they're going to know is when they start paying the bills.
Laura?
As an employee, I really appreciate the fact that you guys went and looked for something for a one-on-one type deal, husband and wife, partners, whatever. Um, we've been paying a family plan for years now.
Didn't need it.
For just two of us. So, thank you.
By way of comparison, the family plan is around twenty-one fifty, twenty-one seventy-five. The one-on-one is around fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is a seven-hundred-dollar, um, a month spread, which is eighty-four hundred a year, which is twenty-one hundred dollars to the employee and sixty-three hundred dollars to the town.
Any other from the audience? On the motion to support the recommendation of the IAC and direct the town administrator to have the application submitted to Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust that has been seconded, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yeah.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Holly. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, we have, uh, to approve the issuance and details of a bond application note for the elementary school project and sign-related closing papers. Mr. Terenzini?
Uh, we have a, um, nine million, two-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar bond anticipation note due later this month. We are not in a position yet to completely roll it over. So, what we're seeking to do is to pay off that nine million, two-hundred-thousand-dollar, give or take, bond anticipation note with a new issuance for eight-point-seven-five million dollars. We will use two-hundred-and-sixty-six, two-sixty-seven, uh, thousands of dollars that are in a reserve fund, uh, that were, um, unused debt monies from last year, debt-excluded monies for this. Um, we will then apply, um, some of the bond proceeds that are on hand and use, uh, monies in this fiscal year's budget, which were budgeted towards this. We will roll it for four months to get it to February of twenty-twenty, at which time it will combine with another four-million-dollar bond anticipation note.
I saw your breakdown.
Leaving us twelve-point-seven-five millions of dollars to pay. At that point, we would issue, um, a general obligation bond of an amount not yet determined, probably in the nine-point-five-million-dollar range, uh, with the first payment being due in fiscal twenty-one. Okay? And we would take the balance, probably in the neighborhood of, uh, three millions of dollars, uh, perhaps four millions of dollars, and roll that as another bond anticipation note for approximately one year. In Ja- February of twenty-twenty-one, we would then have a better sense of when we think the MSBA might make final payment. They don't give you the last five percent.
Two years.
Um, well, the, uh, you know, it's, it, it, it's going to depend upon their backlog and how good your records are. But eighteen, eighteen months, Jeff, you might be right on the two-year side.
I just think.
I mean, one side or the other of eighteen months, um, at that point, they pay you the five percent that they have been holding back. They also make a determination if they are going to participate, and this generally doesn't happen, uh, in any of the contingency monies. Those are not guaranteed reimbursement. So, if you can get there by twenty-twenty-one, which would be that eighteen months or so, um, then you use their final payment to pay down the bond anticipation note uh, that'll be in that three-and-a-half, four-million-dollar range. Uh, and you take the last bit, uh, to, um, either another series of rolling bands that you pay off, uh, within your operating budget, or you take it to a shorter-term general obligation bond. Best I can tell you, bottom line is, you have to pay this note off at the end of November. And we don't have eight-point-seven-five million dollars in the bank. I can tell you that right now.
Darn.
Well, I thought we were doing pretty good, you know, with the half a million we've kind of set aside to, to pay it down.
Yep. So, the bands for nine-two-five, but we need, we can cover the difference between eight-seven-five and nine-two-five with unexpended funds.
Yep, we, we have, uh, when we budgeted last year on the debt-excluded portion, you never know exactly what you're going to need until you actually put the band out to bid and get those. Uh, and so, we, uh, I always estimate a little bit high, and then we set that aside in a reserve to pay this down this year. Uh, and then we also have funds that we've budgeted, uh, within the fiscal twenty budget.
Does the motion need the number in it at all?
Um, we have another one of those very long ones, if you want, tonight, Holly, in the package. Yes. Do you remember where that is, please? That the chairman did, uh, very nicely, um, read the other evening. I don't know if his voice would hold up tonight.
I know.
We have the short version of so moved and we have the long version.
Show me where that is and I'll read it.
It's, I'll have that.
So, basically, it goes from here, and all I did was to approve da-da-da-da-da, and that end connection.
Okay.
And that end.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this, are you making a motion? Because I have a question.
I'm making a motion.
Yes, uh, but we still have discussion. Terry?
Do you want, do you have something?
Yeah, I just had some questions. So, is this another word for bonded indebtedness, like paying off a bond with a bond?
Yes, whether it's, um, a ban or a gob, a general obligation bond, it's all considered bonded indebtedness. Uh, your leases are actually considered indebtedness as well.
I'm taking a deep breath, because I'm trying to think. So, we have to do it. I know we have to do it. I know we have to vote on it. But is there any way to move out of this cycle?
Of borrowing money? No.
Yes. And, um, well, of robbing Peter to pay Paul, or bo- of taking a bond to pay a bond.
Yes, there is a way to move out of the cycle, but you cannot accomplish it under Proposition Two-and-a-half. Nor do I believe that the community would support the means of getting out of it. You use a series of stabilization funds into which You use a series of stabilization funds into which you deposit cash, a given amount every single year, such that when you need that cash, whether it's for rolling stock, a building improvement, or the like, the cash is sitting there. You don't have that flexibility under Prop Two and a Half. I cannot imagine the community, uh, would give you the kind of override that you need to accomplish it. And there's no community that I know of that would, um, go the route on such a major, uh, project.
Terry, this is Mike. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So what, what Carter's talking about, when we had the discussion before about, uh, ambulances, this, I think this is a good, um, metaphor for it. When I was talking about, I would love to be able to purchase ambulances outright to be able to, uh, satisfy like capital needs, but we don't get back the money that we need in our normal budgeting process to be able to do that. And to borrow enough money to be able to take care of these kinds of purchases would be well beyond what the town would support in terms of the, uh, what they would have to give, um, in, in a, in a tax rate to be able to do that. Larger communities do have more fluid funds. However, like Carter was just saying, they would not go out of pocket for a, a nine million dollar, um, obligation, if that helps, uh, if that helps the thought process.
It does, a little bit.
Okay.
So what you're saying is, right now, it's not feasible under Prop Two and a Half, but down the line, if we have more revenue, we might be able to make decisions to change the pattern.
Uh, per- perhaps, Terry, on your rolling stock. So for instance, um, and, and your infrastructure. Uh, so for instance, you have fire equipment. If you knew you had X number of fire equipment and you needed to be set inside a hundred thousand dollars a year, sure. There are communities that have stabilization funds with an override, and they put a hundred thousand dollars a year, every year, into that fire equipment fund, and then when they need a million bucks or four hundred thousand for the ambulance, they simply take it out. Uh, but I know of no community that would attempt to do a forty million dollar project on that kind of cycle.
Even at a fifty percent reimbursement.
You're borrowing money at two and five eighths, uh, most likely, two and five eighths interest by the time we're all done.
Good.
I just have more work to do, more research, and I, you know, I appreciate the discussion.
You ready to go, Diane?
Are you all set, Terry?
Yeah, she was good.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the sale of an eight million, seven hundred and fifty thousand at two point two-five percent general obligation bond anticipation note of the town dated November twenty-second, twenty nineteen, and payable February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty to Piper, Jaffray, and Company at par in accrued interest plus a premium of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Further, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the note, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated October thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and a final official statement dated November sixth, twenty nineteen, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further, that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time. Further, that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the note and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further, that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry and to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion that has been made and seconded. Any board member comment or question? You were first. Mrs. Culver?
She's not going to need to re-read that for the vote if I ask a question, right?
No.
Okay.
Why, because she would feel bad for me?
Yes. So from what I understand is we're gonna pay off some of an existing bond, and then we're gonna redo another bond? Is that what's happening? Okay. Um, my question is, is the paying off some of this existing bond going to improve our rating?
Not, no, not really.
So if not
Oh, rating. Okay, I thought you meant rate.
Our bond rating.
Bond rating.
Yeah.
If not, don't you think that it would be a wise choice to leave things as they stand right now and put those funds aside just because of the unknown with the school and things of that sort? And just roll the bond over as it is for another year, and maybe next year, if we don't need those funds to cover any other expenses like the school, maybe next year, continuing to add throughout this year, like you said you had budgeted, putting a larger sum down will get a lower bond rating.
So if, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
We'll get to the same place with that process, and the monies that are set aside in the reserve are debt-excluded monies. We cannot use them for any purpose except payments towards this item. Because the voters put it outside of the tax cap.
And it's coming due.
Uh, it, yes.
Could you make a motion at the next town meeting to move that into the general fund?
It's, it's debt-excluded. Can't, uh, we cannot move it to the general fund to support the school's highway or anything else. The vote of the town was to exclude the amount of the principal and interest payments on these bonds. We raise the money equivalent to what that is, and then we can only use the monies for that.
Go ahead, Julie. Thank you.
Yeah, my question is, what is the length of the general obligation bond?
What's the length of the?
Wouldn't, wouldn't be determined until next February, but most likely on the order of twenty-seven years.
Okay.
And my other question is, where's the debt schedule for the town?
I didn't ask that.
I didn't hear the, I can't hear the question.
She said, she wants the debt schedule for the town.
We've provided the debt schedule to the advisory committee that we has as a present.
Pardon me? Is it online anywhere?
It is. The, the one that I, when you had asked the question, I had always sent you to the same one that I had been using, the debt schedule that's in the budget book. I, I
It has not been
No one's asked me within the last month or two, but I think it was like around page two sixty-two. That, and that's the, the last time that you had asked me about that. Has it been updated? I know it's gonna be updated because we're going into the, the budget process already, well, we've already kicked off the budget process, but yes. I don't know how much would have changed from that last debt schedule.
Uh, very little.
Yeah. Anything else, Julie? All right, I, I do have the notes from both of you, though.
I, yeah, let's let them get through this vote first, though.
Okay, any other, any further questions? Okay, on the motion that has been already made and seconded, um, how do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
I say.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, not on the, uh, agenda, but related, is we have several documents that need to be signed by the clerk tonight who's not physically present, so as last week I had to, I need to ask you to, uh, elect a clerk pro temp.
A clerk pro temp.
To attest to those several certificates.
What did we do then in the last meeting?
I make a motion to
Always Terry, that's right, yeah.
Right, I make a motion to appoint, um, Jeff Bennett as clerk pro temp.
Second.
Second. Oh, I, did, who, did someone out there say second? Terry, did you second that?
Yes, she did.
Probably did.
Okay, on a motion that has been made to make, uh, Jeff Bennett, Selectman Bennett, uh, clerk pro temp for this session that has been seconded, um, how do you vote, Jeff?
Supposed to do that when I'm not here. Yes.
Uh, Terry?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're very welcome, all. I'll get you back sometime.
Okay, and Julie had, Julie, what was your first question? Oh, um, the length of it, okay. All right, and because we've already gone to item K, the last item on new business is uh, referring to the FY twenty gap closing plan for the eleven, uh, November twenty-first informational meeting, which I know has been posted at least a few times. Um, item five J, we have the memorandum and the table. The table is much the same as the other gap closing, uh, proposals. Uh, Mr. Terenzini, is there anything that you want to talk about?
Um, I will, not, not on this one. Um, I'll update you when the special legislation, uh, is broached. Um, that we provided to you, uh, late last week.
Okay, that, and that's on our agenda for this evening?
Um, I'm asking Holly right this minute.
Okay.
Not on this one?
It wouldn't have been on that one because that came out before Friday morning when we knew we needed to add it.
This one?
No, that, that's complete.
Okay.
Uh, on Friday, we, um, published, advised you of
Oh, yeah, she gave, she gave copies of it.
Okay, you got that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's item K, special legislation, Ray, the Narragansett Regional School District, and the third quarter preliminary tax bill. Happy to speak to it. It's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Carter, go ahead, or?
We're like not on the same page here.
Well, we took, all right, so we've got two, two, two last items. We have the gap closing plan, which we're headed towards our
Public meeting, informational meeting
Yep.
On the twenty-first of November. And the package closed late Thursday, and that all went out to you.
Yep.
On Friday, I emailed you, uh, that we had been asked to prepare special legislation, uh, which was added to the agenda, uh, and published in a timely manner. However, it was yesterday before we were able to provide you with the draft of that document, and later, uh, late today, early this evening, before we ever provide you with the second draft of this, which is what we placed upon your desk as you came into the meeting. So the draft dated November thirteen, twenty nineteen
Yep.
Is the, uh, latest draft.
I've, I've, I mean, I read the email, so I've read through it already, but the, essentially, we're asking, the bottom line or the bluff for this, Carter, is that, uh, well, I'll read right from it. An additional notice of prelim- preliminary tax shall be submitted for approval to and by the Commissioner of Revenue, but in the event that no action by the Commissioner is taken within fifteen days of the date of submission, a preliminary tax shall be deemed approved. I mean, that's the biggest takeaway there, um, in that we're able to issue our third quarter documents as planned.
Yes.
Because if we don't
Right.
We have to borrow money to cover our expenses.
Correct. The statute allows you to send out a preliminary tax bill uh, for the first quarter and the second quarter at fifty percent of what you taxed the prior year, pu- plus some add-ons. I'm not gonna go down the rabbit hole over. Uh, there is a provision in the statute coming out of a case in the city of Lynn in seventeen and, uh, legislation at that time that allows communities to issue a third-quarter preliminary tax bill if its property values have not been certified. Now, why is this important? In the normal course of events, you would set a tax rate, um, early December. You would send that to your printing company mid-December. Your bills would go out on December thirty-one, and they would be due on February one and May one. If you do not send out tax bills prior to December thirty-one, you cannot collect them until May one. That means you have a four-month period, three-month period, four million dollars roughly, in which you are not collecting tax payments, and you have no cash flow
Right.
to cover that. So, uh, we have done a couple of things over the last week. Uh, the first is that last week, you supported a letter I had drafted to the school committee asking them to reconsider their action and to certify their budget at nineteen point five million, and we laid out several risks.
Correct.
Risk one being, we thought they'd end up with a s- lower budget if the state took them over. Risk two, loss of complete local control until the next budget was adopted through the normal and ordinary course of events. Risk number three, we wouldn't be able to send our tax bills out on time. Um, I am pleased to tell you, uh, so we, we did that letter. That went out tonight and was considered by the school committee. We've drafted this special legislation. We have also, um, uh, you know, been pushing DOR to say, okay, we think you have the ability to do this anyways. We think you just need to be perhaps a little more creative with how you're reading the statute.
Right.
So, um, I'm gonna be asking you for permission to file this, uh, anyways in a moment, but I am pleased to tell you, and I know everyone will laugh at my flip phone, but it does accept messages.
This is huge.
That at six fifty-eight, um, this evening, the superintendent, um, informed me that the school committee voted six to two to recertify the fiscal year twenty school budget at the amount of nineteen point five millions of dollars.
I wanted the state to come in.
Too late.
So, um
Yay.
My request to you is that I be authorized to file the special legislation um, uh, in a timely manner if I am not provided with the final certification.
Right.
Um
Right, because we don't
Uh, because I don't wanna file this thing and look a little bit silly if I get that certification
Too late.
Um, a, a day or two later. Uh, I will also, uh, and I reached out uh, to Senator Goby's office, and I'll reach out to Representative Whipps to suggest that the statute clearly provides for a third-quarter bill, uh, when the values aren't certified. But given that more and more school districts are coming closer and closer to the edge, that they should, in my opinion, amend this statute to allow for whenever a town can't set its tax rate because the school budget is still not settled.
Right.
Getting the budget by December one, uh, and Kelly and, um, uh, Luanne gave you this warning just two weeks ago, I believe.
Yes.
Uh, that DOR is running behind. Um, so that's, that's my request, Mr. Chairman, that you authorize uh, me to file this special legislation, uh, on your behalf in a timely manner, um, should I not receive the formal certification on the school's recertification at nineteen point five millions of dollars. When you're done with that, I'd like to circle back to the gap closing plan for a moment, if I might.
Understood.
Get it up. So I will, um, move that motion.
Okay, a motion to file an act relative to quarterly taxes. Yeah, okay, we have a second. Wow, you guys are moving quick now. Uh, any discussion? Heard a lot of murmuring out there. Any discussion?
I'm disappointed. I am. We went through all that. And you know, I do not think they would have hurt our town because you cannot get blood out of a rock.
Yeah.
It's a real shame that they didn't, you know, they wanted to go this far. Oh, well, push one more, because I don't want to go through this next year. It wasn't fair to all the people in this town that have always supported the school, have been lied to. And it's really sad because I was willing to bet my farm that we weren't going to get hurt. It's really, I really am disappointed.
I think maybe the school understood that as well.
Yeah, well, you know what? They could have done this, they could have done this months ago.
Maybe three meetings ago.
Yeah, three meetings ago.
Two meetings ago.
You know? That's really too bad.
Maybe, you know, we're meeting every month since August.
And they came this far from the truck running over them.
Yeah.
It's too bad.
Yeah.
It's good for us because you guys planned ahead. They still have to make changes because they didn't do their job. It's going to be interesting.
Yep, the, I think the yelling, screaming isn't over, but at least the, at least we're going to cover what the town's obligation is to its citizens, and I think that's a, a good thing.
You know, I think that it's really too bad that we have to go through all that. I mean, there's just nowhere for us to give them more. But we'll do this next year, too.
Yeah, but I, I know I was going to say to you, Beverly, that I, I know that we're committed, I, we've already started sitting down with them, and I said it at the last joint meeting, we had a lot of communication items that when we finished this, this process coming from the spring, where we both looked inward and said we didn't communicate enough. And a lot of things, I've heard the word "too little, too late."
You're oblivious, though. You're oblivious. They just don't get it.
I'm an optimist. I mean, I, I don't want to go through it next year. April, you had something?
I think that we residents sent a really loud message to them this year, and I don't think that you should feel at all defeated.
No, I don't feel defeated. I'm frustrated because it was unnecessary. We could have done this a whole lot, lot sooner.
Yeah, I, I agree with you there. However, I think that once they realized that it was real, I, I'm just glad that they were able to agree to the nineteen point five.
I think everybody that's on a board in this town should be on the advisory board first, for at least one.
Faith is kind of blazing away for that. She had no plans, I mean.
They don't see.
The more you wind up having those online discussions, the more you're like, I'm going to go find it.
Puddle vision.
I get, I get, I understand. I agree with you. Okay, there's no further discussion on the motion to file an act relative to quarterly taxes in the town of Templeton for fiscal year twenty twenty. It's been seconded. How do you vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Terry?
Diane?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Is she gone?
Terry, are you there?
She's looking for the mute button. Well, you got three for it.
Terry?
Okay, Carter.
Well, first.
Do you want to circle back to the gap closing?
I, I know there was a lot of.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yep. Terry, how did you vote on an act relative to the quarterly?
Yes, I did. I voted yes.
Okay. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, Terry.
So, so first, I want to, setting aside what might have happened, could have, would have, should have. We also had the risk the commissioner could have set the budget higher, and I know that the board had a lot of angst when it went into the meeting with the nineteen point five the first time, the second time we asked you to do it, the third time we asked you to do it. But I just, I want to thank the board for their support throughout the process. Circling back to the gap closing plan, if our calculations are correct, and I want to await that final certification, we did, we did test it. We ran it back by the schools, but it appears we will still need to cut about seventy-one thousand dollars, seventy-one five thirty-two, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, nineteen five is still there.
A series of cuts that I think will not, we, we've had damage to the institution already with the loss of some employees and such. But I think we can make the cuts in the budget that are livable, that has gone to the advisory committee. We'll schedule this informational hearing for the twenty-first, and we will need those cuts on the evening of the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Now that it looks like the way has been paved to get to a tax rate in early to mid-December.
Okay. Any questions on that, that agenda item?
Yeah, so we have to, if, I just, at nineteen five, do we have to cut a hundred and five thousand dollars out of the police department?
No, what we did was we set this up with two columns.
So I just want to understand that which column is which.
So, the school budget A, which was nineteen million, five hundred thousand, we had a beginning gap of seventy-one, three twenty-two. I misspoke on the five thirty-two. My apologies. And so, we're suggesting these cuts in this descending order, and that shows you how much is left to cut. So we would have to cut.
So theirs would be done already?
Yep, there would be no cuts to them.
Okay, fine, because they already did their cuts.
Well, they have not been spending.
They have not been spending.
The budgets have not been cut, but the fire chief cut back. We didn't fill the vacancies. We haven't had the
I see.
Dual dispatchers on duty. We have done what we could.
This is all in the.
To not expend.
Okay.
And we will, once we make the formal announcement of the informational meeting, we'll get that spreadsheet up to go with it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question, though, Diane. Thank you.
Well, I was just, like, the way I was looking at it, I was like, oh, my God.
That was, that was, that was column B.
Yep.
I was crying into my coffee.
Yeah, the cut line didn't, wasn't jumping out at you. I understand.
Yeah, because under column A, there's a zero cut for the police department.
Okay, I just wanted to be, well, I mean, I have looked at the rest of them. None of them were pretty. None of them.
On the gap closing. Anything further on gap closing? So that's the twenty-first of November. Is that the informational joint?
Yes, we could post, I think, we, we said you were going to consult with the advisory. We can invite them. We can post it as joint. I can ask them tomorrow night what their desire is.
I mean, I could, I, I could probably guess that there would be people present from the advisory anyway, but whether you wanted, if you had a quorum, if you wanted to make it a joint meeting, we just want to make sure we post it in time. Being the representative. I'm sorry?
I think if it's a Thursday, we have one scheduled.
Okay, is that, is the twenty-first a Thursday?
Yeah, I think there's one. That's the day after the town meeting. There's already one scheduled.
Okay.
That's, that would be?
Yeah, it's a, it's a Thursday.
It's the week after? Yeah, next, the twenty-first, we have one.
That's the end of the new business at nine fourteen PM. I've got nothing under old business.
I had just asked a question of Carter today, just because I wanted to bring it up. I asked him to bring us up to date on the Thirsty Turtle Pub.
Okay.
So if you could just bring the public up to date on that.
Sure, there was a hearing originally scheduled for November. The license holder requested a extension into January. We objected despite our objection and a rule that requires both parties to agree to the extension. The ABCC did grant the extension, and the hearing is now in November. I'm sorry, I can't remember, January, my apologies.
January.
I can't remember seventh to twelfth, nineteenth. Yeah, somewhere, somewhere in mid-January.
No, they, they had already voted that, their initial vote was no wrongdoing, but this was the, the appeal on their, the agreement with Mr. Arseneau, London Bridge. It's not London Bridge, it's Tressel Bridge, Thirsty Turtle.
DVA Thirsty Turtle, yes.
That their agree, we basically were going to take back the, the license until, until it was up for renewal, which I think is in December, but we have a continuance of that based on the door and other things that he failed to comply with.
And we're preparing a list of conditions to attach to that license that would mirror that agreement.
Right, ma, made, he made it here and agreed to it with his, with council, so.
Right.
That was the issue, and I, and I, I know I was on Skype when I, I stressed that point. Any other questions about Thirsty Turtle?
No, I just wanted an update.
Okay. We are up to board and staff member comments and reports. Jeff, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I would just like to comment, I, I was going to have a little rebuttal to some stuff that was said at a school committee, but with that is potentially good news. I would just remind everybody, as, as someone said in the audience here tonight, yes, the school committee could have accepted the nineteen point five sooner.
Can you take it? I'm sorry, keep going.
They could have accepted the nineteen five sooner. The towns, however, also could have voted for the nineteen seven. And this whole, and we probably will be in this position next year or again, and this highlights that it's not solving anything if the town's on the, the local contribution goes up. We've been given the bigger number in past years. We were here five years ago or so, in thirteen, or six years. We gave the bigger number. We've given the bigger number before that. We've given a larger contribution since that. It does not solve the problem. It kicks the can down the road for another year. The problem is not at the local level. The problem is east. The state legislature, the governor, and even the Department of Education. And the board voted unanimously to invite the school committee to all committees. Town, they, they're a town committee. They're, they're elected by the people. They belong there. They were just never invited for whatever reason. We voted, discussed it to, to ask them to come, and they have thought it was a good idea by way of communication I had with the, the chair and the superintendent. Also, they went through the town administrator. So they were formally invited. They're going to hopefully, however many of there are there. The, the problem is that the good people, the towns and the school district, and not just Templeton, Phillipston, and Narragansett, we got to get together east, west of four ninety-five and collectively push and push hard on this issue that it's the state funding formula. It's, it's an antique. It didn't work when they started. It doesn't work now. As Mr. Hatch, if you've watched that or were at that meeting, showed, you give the minimum contribution by law and you get penalized. You pay the minimum plus the penalty, as Templeton did at the special town meeting in, in June. Take out the busing, which is not part of the net school spending requirement, and we still paid way above the minimum contribution and, and the penalty added. And we still get penalized on the net school spending because we're spending above it, and our aid is never going to go up. It's, it's not the towns and it's not the school district. It is the legislature and it is the governor, and we need to collectively get together and fight that fight because it's not locally. We, we, we fight like family with the school district and the towns, but the real, the real problem is in Boston. It's the funding formula and the law. And we're going to be doing this all the time until the law changes and gets updated. And the, the funding and that carrot, the regional school transportation thing, seven hundred thousand dollars. We're not going to save it. It would, it would be freed up to apply other places. Our school assessment, our infrastructure, all kinds of things. It's about applying the money, and, and because you can't really say, well, we're going to save this money. It frees up money to be applied somewhere else because municipal government, like everywhere, the costs just keep going up. And I think we need to realize that, that it's not as, you know, mu, as much as anyone. The school district is really not, you know, the problem. Yes, they could have took the nineteen five, but we could have voted the nineteen seven. We're both, we, we got to look at the right direction and, and fight, fight, or the debate where it belongs. And I hope everybody remembers that. We get there some, or start that thing this year.
Right.
Thank you.
If, if you remember correctly to Jeff, Mr. Hatch said that they are changing the net school spending formula, and it will, over the next five to seven years, and it will be more. We will be assessed more. Ours probably won't change a lot, a lot, because we don't have a lot of English language learners and and special education, but it is going to change. So, you know, but I agree with Jeff, and we've talked about this at several meetings where we do have to have a really good advocacy group, where we do have to, we cannot have all these unfunded mandates where this, where Desi says, well, you school have to do X, but the town, you know, it's on the backs of the taxpayer, and that's not really fair. It's not fair at all. You know, you pay this for special education, but we are not going to pay for that. Well, you pay this for per student, per school, but we're not going to help you pay for that. It's always on the backs of the taxpayer. And by the way, you know, it's locally on the backs of the taxpayer, but who pays the state taxes? You do. You do. So it's on, it's double on you. You know, it's double on me. So it's not fair at all. So I definitely agree with Jeff on that.
Do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, Terry?
I do.
Okay.
I have three, so bear with me. I, you know, I hate to bring up Article twenty-three again, but I really have a problem with how it came about that biomix material brought to the town from out of town as neither garbage nor refuse. I did go to the North Clot Hill. I am interested in keeping Templeton great and not bringing in. I was wondering, so what I was wondering is if there was any way, if that, if the citizens did do a petition, if we could get re-submitted and restated to include that paper pledge, as I said in the beginning, because I just don't believe that's in the best interest of our land. That's my first one. My second one is, and I don't know if, and, and I mean this in all sincerity and innocence, just what the rules are for town administrators talking to town council without consulting the board. And then my third one would be your thoughts on considering replacing our current, our current town council. Because he's expensive and I'm not sure if he's working in our best interest. So those are my two. Anyone, any comments?
I will say we just recently replaced town council because our last town council was expensive. And also, not necessarily, we weren't satisfied.
I've got them all, though. Terry, thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
I was just, yeah, I was just, you did, but I, how did that, like, I understand the beginning of how that twenty-three got changed, but I don't understand how the town council decided it was neither garbage, biomix was neither garbage nor refuse. That just stung the heck out of me.
I don't know.
Legal opinion, yeah. And it was said from the audience. It's, it is, it's legal opinion. And twenty-three wasn't changed. It was removed.
Oh.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Mr. Terenzini?
Nothing, Mr. Ter.
Holly? Adam? Lori?
Oh, but you know what? One of my questions wasn't answered. How, what are the rules of PAs talking to town council?
I'll, I'll take it offline. I, I mean, the town administrator enjoys freedom to talk to town council because that's, that, we're not a full-time force. He is the chief administrator for the town. And prepares, and, and basically prepares all, really virtually everything that we have before us that requires legal review. So he doesn't, he doesn't come to us to ask permission to, to use town council.
Okay, for every little thing? Is there any special circumstances where it's required?
What, that he would come to us? I, I mean, I, I couldn't speak off the, off the cuff, but I mean, if it had to do with a, a personal issue, and if he was using it improperly, well, I mean, you wouldn't ask permission to use. you wouldn't ask the permission to use it improperly, but I don't know how best to answer your question.
I don't know either, I'm just, again, that, that last little-
We might be treading some serious water here.
Yeah, I mean, it's a legal opinion, and, you know, legal opinion isn't personal opinion.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wonder if it's the truth, though.
Yeah, I've-
I just wonder if it's the truth. Biomix is neither nor, I mean, it's sketchy to me.
Okay. All right, that, that exhausts board and staff member comments and reports. Mr. Terenzini, are we going into executive session for chapter thirty, subsection twenty-one?
I have nothing to say.
We are not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We are adjourned at nine-